Everyone, to the April 7th, 2021 City Council Meeting. Temporary public comment email established for City of Las Banners. You can email your comments for public forum or public hearings to cityclerk@lasbanners.org. You can also either mail or hand deliver them to City Hall at 520 J Street. Emails will have to be 250 words or less and have to be received by 4:00 PM of the date of the meeting in order to be read into the record. We will be taking during public hearing, we will also take emails during in real time. So at this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. And we will ask Acting Police Chief Ed to lead us in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief, we will now move to roll call, Ms. Maloney.
Jones.
Present. Yes.
Lambert.
For the camera. Here.
Lewis.
I'm thinking.
Ms. Care Murphy, I think you need to mute your mic because we can hear you. Lambert.
Here.
Lewis. Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Yamas.
Here.
Aria.
Here, we have a quorum. We'll move to consideration approval of the agenda. Staff has asked that we remove item five as that was a leftover from the last agenda and that's an error there. And also been asked to remove item seven H, which is the consent agenda item H. So when we get the, we entertain the motion for approving the agenda, we will ask that those items be excluded in the motion. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I'd like to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item number five and pulling item H off the consent agenda.
And that motion is to approve the entire agenda.
I'm sorry, to approve the agenda, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. I have a motion by Council, Mayor Portem Lewis, do I have a second?
Mayor, I have a second.
Mr. Lambert. I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lewis and a second by Councilmember Lambert to approve the agenda as submitted minus item five and item seven H. Ms. Maloney, roll call.
Jones.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Yamas.
Yes.
Aria.
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Item six, we'll move on to the public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers may submit their comments by submitting a written statement limited to 250 words or less, by dropping it off in the utility payment box at City Hall 520 J Street, by mail, or by emailing cityclerk@lasbanners.org. Comments received will be read into the record during the City Council meeting. Ms. Maloney, do we have any comments in the public forum tonight?
Yes, I've received one comment to be read.
Please.
My name is Dwayne Brim, I reside at 1813 Church Court. I have been trying for four years to find out who is responsible for deciding what the height of the shrubs are supposed to be along Badger Flat and Cardoza Road. We are told by Anderson Homes that we are only responsible for our side of the property. The city landscape contractor does a regular trim on the side but does not keep the top trimmed. I have paid out of pocket and have maintained the height myself over the years. I am tired of the leaf rubbish that flows into our yard. For the past two years, they have been trimming Cardoza Road between Lionstone and the turnabout. Also, on the northeast side from Furr to the county line. Why can't the rest be maintained the same? And it's signed Dwayne Brim.
Thank you, Ms. Maloney. I would ask that staff have a look at Mr. Brim's request and see. We'll get back to him on that issue. If there are no further comments in the public forum, we'll move on to the consideration of the approval of the consent agenda. Ms. Maloney?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrants numbers 226090 through 226408 in the amount of $1,897,614.63. Minutes for the March 17th, 2021 City Council meeting. Minutes for the March 22nd, 2021 Special City Council meeting. Minutes for the March 30th, 2021 Adjourned City Council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6339, authorizing the acting city manager to develop and submit an application for statewide park development and community revitalization program grant funds. City Council Resolution Number 6340, authorizing the submission of an application to the California Infrastructure and Economic Development Bank, IBANK, for financing a capital improvement project, authorizing the incurring of an obligation payable to IBANK for the financing of a capital improvement project. If IBANK approves said application, declaration of official intent to reimburse certain expenditures from the proceeds of an obligation and approving certain other measures in connection therewith. City Council Resolution Number 6341, approving the road maintenance and rehabilitation account proposed project list for fiscal year 2021-2022. Item seven H was removed. City Council Resolution Number 6343, amending the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget by increasing revenues in the amount of $981,000 and expenditures in the amount of $617,000 in the building department budget associated with a growth in building permit activity. City Council Resolution Number 6344, adopting a revised budget for the fiscal year 2020-2021 as it pertains to the community center fee account for replacement of the boiler at the Las Banners Community Center in the amount of $20,870. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you, Ms. Maloney. I'll go through the council, if any council member would like to pull an item, please let me know what the item letter is and whether you would like to pull it for discussion or a separate vote. Mr. Jones?
Mayor, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
I'm good here too, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
Nothing to be pulled, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Mr. Yamas?
Mr. Mayor, 7J for discussion.
For discussion. Okay, so for 7J, for the discussion, we will go to the Acting Public Works Director, City Engineer, Mr. Possesh.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I would like to turn this over to our Parks and Rec Operations Manager, Joe Heim. He's spent quite a bit of time researching this and making sure that this item, this is the second time that we'll bring it to your attention, that we have done the due diligence in researching the reason for this item to be brought to the council and also be in a position to fully answer your questions. So, Mr. Heim, please go ahead, thank you.
Yes, thank you. So the boiler, there's two boilers at the community center location here. Each heat, each side of the facility, on the grand room side, the boiler went out in about December and it needs to be replaced. We went out to get estimates from quite a few groups. Some groups didn't want to go through the business license process, they were out of town groups. Another group wasn't able to give us an estimate back and we did get a couple estimates as well. Young's Air Conditioning Local Business was the lowest bidder and the group that we'll move forward with. Is there any specific questions that you have regarding the unit here?
Just why was it pulled from the last and then brought up at this point? What happened in interim? Was it working? What do we use as a backup, et cetera?
So, we haven't been using anything. The building, on that side of the building, hasn't really seen a lot of use because the grand room has not been used for too many activities given the COVID protocols. So it heats the building and also runs the hot water. Moving forward, we'll need it obviously for the heat of the facility, but also the hot water to be able to get a health permit for the kitchen, to be able to use activities there. As far as, we had wanted to bring it about a month ago to council, I think it was the early March council meeting. And we had been requested to get additional quotes and so that's where we had secured some additional quotes and that was the reason.
And wanted to show us, what kind of warranty do we have with this work?
So it's in the staff report here, it's a 10-year warranty on the heat exchanger and one year on all the other parts and complete labor for the installation.
Okay, very good. That's all I had, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And thank you, Mr. Heim and Mr. Possesh. Nice to see that getting fixed. So with that, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Mayor, Councilmember Lambert here. Would like to request a consider consent agenda minus that H, I guess, to be approved.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for noting the omission. I have a motion by Councilmember Lambert, do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, Yamas here, I'll second that.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilmember Lambert and a second by Councilmember Yamas to approve the consent agenda submitted minus item, line item H. Ms. Maloney, roll call, please.
Jones.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Yamas.
Yes.
Aria.
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Now we move on to item eight, public hearing. If you challenge the proposed action as described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item A, to receive public comment and consideration of a recommendation to amend Title IX, Chapter Three, Article 30 of the Las Banners Municipal Code as it relates to accessory dwelling units and to consider an exemption from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to Section 15061B3 of the SEQA guidelines. And the ordinance we're seeking, requesting to adopt is 1190, which amending and restating Article 30, Chapter Three of Title IX of the Las Banners Municipal Code relating to accessory dwelling units to implement new state law requirements relating to accessory dwelling units. And for that item, we are going to go to Community and Economic Development Director, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So tonight, we are requesting that the City Council would waive the first reading and introduce ordinance 1190, which would amend and restate Article 30, Chapter Three, Title IX of the Municipal Municipal Code relating to accessory dwelling units. Next slide. Just a little bit of background on this particular item. There were about six housing bills that Governor Newsom signed in actually 2019 that became effective on January 1st, 2020. And they are related to accessory dwelling units. So with those changes, it does require the Las Banners City, the City of Las Banners, to update our municipal code to comply with state law in regards to accessory dwelling units. Next slide. I just want to highlight some key changes that were brought about with those six bills. So each single-family residential lot is permitted to have one accessory dwelling unit and one junior accessory dwelling unit. For new accessory dwelling units, if they were permitted between January 1st of 2020 and January 1st of 2025, the property owner does not have to live on site. All the units can be rentals, but that provision does sunset after 2025. A junior accessory dwelling unit is a small unit, this is its definition, that is within the primary residence and that is not required to have a private bathroom. And the bathroom can be provided and the unit is attached to. It does need to have a kitchenette and its own entrance and it may not be over 500 square feet. So that's one of the key changes. Another one is that if the accessory dwelling unit is under 750 square feet, there will be no development impact fee charges. And if the units are over 750 square feet, they can be charged by the local government. Another key change is that accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units are permitted on multifamily lots. So if you have a duplex or you have multiple multifamily units, buildings, they are permitted to have accessory dwelling units. The maximum size required for an accessory dwelling unit has changed. We're going to get into that a bit, there's different requirements based on certain provisions. And then accessory dwelling units under 800 square feet and smaller do not have to meet site coverage requirements. So for instance, one of our code requirements within the municipal code is that no more than 70% of a single-family residential lot can be covered. And under the provisions of the State of California, we cannot prohibit an accessory dwelling unit to have to meet those coverage requirements if it's under 800 square. Next slide. So the review and approval process, permits for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units must be reviewed ministerially. So that means that they do not go to the planning commission, there is no public hearing. They are done through staff and essentially over the counter. And there's no discretionary review or hearings are permitted. So we are not allowed to go to the planning commission or even up to the City Council, obviously. Then the time to act on a permit, this was one of the key provisions that has been changed. It is now 60 days from a complete application if there is an existing dwelling unit on the lot. The previous versions of the law allowed for 120 days, so that's been shortened to half. Next slide. The general accessory dwelling unit standards, these are all required now within the update of, in accordance with state law. They must allow accessory dwelling units in areas zone to allow residential uses. Whereas previously, the law allowed cities to designate those areas where accessory dwelling units could be located. So we could pick and choose which zones previously that we wanted accessory dwelling units to be permitted. And now with the update in state law, if we have any zones that allow for residential uses, accessory dwelling uses are a use by right. An example of this would be our mixed-use zoning district. And now because residential uses are a use that is allowed in that district, this would be a use by right. Also, owner occupancy requirements are not permitted. In our previous ordinance, cities did have, in the way that the law was previously written, cities had the discretion to require the property owner to live in one of the units. And now we are not permitted to require that provision for five years. So from 2020 and it sunsets on January 1st, 2025. And between that time period, those units are to remain exempt. And then rentals are prohibited for less than 30 days. And that's just to prevent short-term rentals. Next slide. So additions and new detached accessory dwelling units are prohibited from enforcing minimum lot size requirements. That was, the state required this revision because what they were finding was municipalities were using minimum lot size requirements to prohibit accessory dwelling units. Also, lot coverage requirements are prohibited for accessory dwelling units as they prove as stated, smaller than 800 square feet or if it's taller than 16 feet and are exactly four feet from all side and rear property lines. So if it meets within those definitions, it is not required to be prohibited for lot coverage. So if there's a primary dwelling unit that is already covering that 70% of that lot and that proposed accessory dwelling unit is smaller than 800 feet and meets these provisions, it is, we are not allowed to prohibit it because of site coverage. It is allowed, it is permitted. Setbacks, there are no setbacks for conversions of existing structures. So if it's a conversion of, say, a shed or a detached garage, there, for a conversion, there is no setback. And then the minimum setback is no more than four feet on the side and rear yard setbacks for all other accessory dwelling units.
Ms. Maloney, before you move forward, could you go back and explain to the council what you mean by the, what was it, the coverage? I think it was all part.
Lot coverage?
Was it on the previous slide?
Lot coverage was on the slide we were just on.
Okay, so does, does, is that just regarding the setback? Or does that mean that you can't have vegetation coverage if someone does not want to see that excessive dwelling unit? dwelling unit on their, from their property, which is only going to have a four-foot setback? That they can't have some sort of coverage to prevent them from seeing that?
No, so the neighboring property, this does not prohibit the neighboring property from having any type of landscaping. So previously, to just kind of explain and give some background on this provision. So our current ordinance in this particular area is not in compliance with state law, now current state law, because ours requires a five-foot setback on the side and a ten-foot at the rear because we follow our current zoning laws for, for single-family residential units. But now with the new law, they are allowed to be at the four-foot side setback, four-foot rear side, rear yard setback, excuse me. But that does not prohibit, you know, my neighbor from having landscaping on their side of the fence if, if, you know, they should feel to do so. That does not, this just does not allow the city to prohibit that accessory dwelling unit because it is at the four-foot setback. So I hope that clarified. They're allowed to go down to a minimum of four feet.
Can I help you with that question, Stacy?
Absolutely. Jump in.
Mrs. Lewis, coverage in the context of that bullet is the amount of buildings you have on the lot. So if you're only allowed to have seventy percent coverage of your lot with buildings and you're at that seventy percent number, if you decide you want an ADU of eight hundred square feet or smaller, you can do that even though it would mean your lot coverage for buildings would be larger than seventy percent. So I don't know what our R1 coverage is, Stacy, in terms of.
It is seventy percent.
So I think it's seventy percent. So in this bullet point, the example would be if I had a house on my lot that already covered the lot seventy percent of the lot. In normal times, before state law, I could not build anything more on that lot. Under this new law, I'm allowed to build an eight hundred square foot ADU even though it will take me over the seventy percent lot coverage. So the coverage is talking about the amount of buildings in square feet that you have on your lot in relation to the size of the lot. So, but it's.
Is there any requirement of footage between the ADU and the residence?
No, it could be detached or attached.
So there, there's no requirement?
No, and I think that word where it says taller than sixteen feet really should say not taller than sixteen feet.
Yes.
So if it's eight hundred square feet and it's no taller than sixteen feet and it's four feet from the side and your rear property lines, lot coverage doesn't come into play in terms of not allowing you to have that ADU on your lot. See, under the old law, we could, it would not pass the ministerial approval due to lot coverage if you are already at the maximum amount of lot coverage. Which, in Los Banos, I would say most of the newer construction is at probably the maximum lot coverage because that's what the development community is doing. They're maximizing the amount of square footage that they can build on small lots. I hope that, and that it doesn't have to do with, doesn't deal with landscaping or screening or anything. It's just purely an issue of how much, how much of a building you can have or multiple buildings on your lot. I hope that, I hope that clarifies it.
Yes, it does. And I do have some other questions, but I'll hold them till the end of the presentation.
Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so size limits. Must allow for efficiency units. So those are a hundred and fifty square feet. Those are, those must be allowed. And the maximum must be at least eight hundred and fifty square feet or a thousand square feet if it's two bedrooms or more. Next slide. So parking and the changes here. Now the maximum of one space is per bedroom or per accessory dwelling unit, whichever is less. No parking is required for an efficiency or junior accessory dwelling unit. So the change there is that it used to allow for one space per any accessory dwelling unit, and now there's exceptions that the maximum is one space per bedroom or per accessory dwelling unit, whichever is less. And then we cannot require an additional parking space for an efficiency unit or a junior accessory dwelling unit. We must allow tandem parking. So if the garage is available, we must, we must count the driveways tandem parking. Accessory dwelling units on multifamily sites, it requires cities to allow accessory dwelling units on multifamily sites in addition to single-family sites. So whereas before we could just allow it on single-family residential, now it is allowed and a permitted use by right in multifamily sites as well. Next slide. And so a question that was brought up, and this slide was added from the Planning Commission as our accessory dwelling unit ordinance is existing prior to the new twenty twenty laws, null and void. And so this question was brought up. You know, if, if tonight, we, the council should decide not to adopt the proposed ordinance, you know, essentially what would happen? And so the answer to this is no, it would not be null and void. Only what would be null and void would be to the extent that the existing, our own existing accessory dwelling unit ordinance conflicts with state law. So essentially where those key changes are and the city is more prohibited, the state law would, would be what's in effect and the default. So state standards are required to be followed at a minimum. And then the Planning Commission held a public hearing on February twenty-four to consider the proposed ordinance a recommended approval to Los Banos City Council. Next slide. So with that, staff is recommending that the City Council would waive the first reading and introduce ordinance number eleven ninety to amend and restate Article Thirty, Chapter Three of Title Nine of the Los Banos Municipal Code relating to accessory dwelling units. I did want to add another question that was brought up to the Planning, at the Planning Commission was, well, what discretion does the city have? If this is state law and state mandates that cities update their zoning codes to follow state law, you know, what discretion really does the city have? And there is still discretion for the city. There are areas where the city does have some flexibility. Just as that, though, you know, a couple of slides ago, we have to, we can't be more prohibitive than the minimum. We could allow for more flexibility, but we cannot be more prohibitive. Especially within those key changed areas. So I hope that answers most of your questions and I'd be happy to answer any more that you have. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and then we'll go through council, maybe. So we'll go to Ms. Melanie to see if there are any comments for the public hearing on this item.
Since this is the public hearing, let me take a moment to pause and refresh my email to see if anybody's going to send it by.
Thank you.
We have received no comments.
Thank you. Having received no comments, we will close the public hearing and come back to council and go through each, through the council for questions and comments on the item. Mr. Jones?
No questions or comments, Mayor?
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
I do have one question. So either with the first ordinance or the second ordinance, this is just allowing a dwelling to be built on your property for, within, within the guidelines there on any residential homes?
Yes, within, yes. The answer to that is yes, any residential. So if there's a primary dwelling unit, it is allowed. It's a permitted use.
Okay, so what about the neighboring or the, I'm going to say the house behind has issues with a dwelling going in behind that house could be an issue, you know? Do they have, I'm sure there's certain guidelines that they're building, right? That they still have to follow?
Yeah, so they do have to follow the building code and fire code, and for instance, sprinklers. If the primary dwelling unit is required to have fire sprinklers, that accessory dwelling unit is required. It still needs a building permit. It still has to meet the minimum requirements. But there will not be a public hearing process. There is not a zoning process to the Planning Commission. It is a use by right, but they do need a building permit.
Okay, so the residential's behind or beside really doesn't have a say in, correct?
As long as that unit, that accessory dwelling unit meets the minimum requirements, it's a permitted use by right.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify all that just a little bit, so I understood a little bit more.
Stacy, can you refresh my recollection? Did we leave in the language that requires the accessory dwelling unit to be consistent in architecture with the primary dwelling unit? So, so the, that's really not a discretionary call and it's a, it's a very close call as to whether HCD is going to allow that. But we put language into the ordinance that at least requires the accessory dwelling unit to complement what's already on there so that you don't have very different forms of architecture, colors, roof palette, things like that. We will have to submit this to HCD for their approval. And if they think that is beyond ministerial approval, they'll kick it back. But I thought we put that in there so that you don't have, for instance, a earth-tone house and then a barn red accessory dwelling unit on the same lot that could be viewed as, some as an eyesore. Does that make sense? So that is one of the things that we put into it to try to mitigate the other requirements is that at least it's consistent with the current architecture as best it can be.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lambert, Mr. Vaughn. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a few questions. And this one's kind of far-fetched, Stacy, but I heard you say something about ADUs and multiple dwellings. So my question is, can a person with an apartment put an ADU inside an apartment?
So they can have an attached or detached accessory dwelling unit. And they can have a junior accessory dwelling unit. So with a multifamily site, they're actually allowed up to two accessory dwelling units. So yes, it's a permitted use.
I would assume they would have to get permission of the property owner to do that.
Oh, well, it would have to be the property owner to do it. They have to pull the building permit. A tenant cannot do that.
Okay, so that was my next question. You said that for ADUs under seven hundred and fifty square feet, there will be no fees. But you say, what you said is that they have to pull permits. So permits require fees.
So there's a difference between the type of fees. So it would be development impact fees. So for water, sewer, traffic, fire, police, those development impact fees, we cannot charge. But the building permit, we are still allowed to charge permit fees, yes.
So what happens if we get to the point where we have too many of these ADUs and it causes a water shortage in the City of Los Banos? Do we have any way under the law to stop further building of those type of units? Because it would, it would affect the building of housing in our community altogether if we, if we could not provide water.
I think that's the only circumstance that you can deny discretionary an ADU is if you do not have water sewer capacity.
Okay, all right. Couple more garages. Does this ADU apply to garage which is supposed to be used for the placement of your vehicles? So they can have multiple ADUs inside of a garage?
They can convert that garage into an ADU, into an accessory dwelling unit, and we cannot prohibit it. They still need to pull a building permit. They still need to meet the minimum requirements to be able to have that conversion. But as long as they meet those minimum requirements, we cannot prohibit the conversion of the garage.
Okay. So then the last question is, in the case where you may have a property owner living on the property at this particular time, but with this new law decides to move out to create additional space to rent out in a rental home, let's say. But with the year two thousand twenty-five, this whole ADU thing kind of sunsets about them having to live on their property. Do we have something that we're going to devise or have in place for tracking owners who are moving out of their residence to notify them that they must move back in after two thousand twenty-five?
It only applies to new ADUs after twenty twenty-five. So the, the current rules apply up to twenty twenty-five.
So what you're saying, whatever's done between now and twenty twenty-five, if they decide to move out, they can move out forever?
Yes.
But after twenty twenty-five?
They just have to be an owner occupant if they're applying for a new ADU.
Okay.
And our ordinance.
That would be a nightmare to try to track. I get where you're going.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was wondering, you know?
It's only, it's only applying to ADUs that are created during that period of time.
Well, it's still going to be kind of a nightmare because I can only imagine there's probably going to be some illegal ADUs that will pop up and how do we verify when those constructions happen?
Well, that.
That's going to be another nightmare.
There will be a land use covenant requiring owner occupancy and also not allowing ADUs to be sold separately from the primary dwelling. And that will, that will at least alert the next buyer that, you know, they got to be mindful of what's going on. As far as illegal construction, you know, that, that's, that's basically a code enforcement issue that if they stumble upon someone has, you know, multiple ADUs when they're only entitled to a junior and a regular ADU, that's a code enforcement issue.
Yes, I do realize that.
When you said, they can only convert that garage into one ADU. So you can't chop it up into six, for instance, and have, turn it into a rooming house.
So it's not two ADUs in a garage, just one?
It's, you know, it could be one, but it could be, if that's a junior, if it's set up like a junior ADU, it would also allow another detached ADU on the property.
Oh, detached, okay, all right. Okay.
I would just, I would just stress that since we've had this on the books for the last two years, I think the activity with ADUs in terms of permits has been minimal. And I think part of the reason is because it's really only attractive to the older lots in town with smaller houses on them. It's not attracted to the newer, the newer houses where, you know, the developer has used basically every square foot of the lot. So I think we've had less than a couple in the last two years. But I think Stacy told me they're seeing a lot more inquiries because there are actually companies that are specializing in prefab ADUs. So, anyway. I don't think this has, going to have a significant effect in Los Banos, but we'll just have to track the number of ADUs for the next year or two and see how much activity there is.
Is the state going to be collecting any kind of fees? Is, is the state going to be collecting any kind of fees, uh, or any monies out of this, these type of programs? They, they kind of converted a way for cities to collect fees on, uh, daycares. Uh, and, and they took that upon themselves to only be able to, uh, get the fees. Is there anything that you see that's going on right now where they're gonna give fees and cut the city out?
No.
Not at this point?
No.
Okay.
So ADUs are, I think, here to stay. The, the purpose of this ordinance is to make sure that we're in compliance with state law. That also then puts us in compliance with our own housing element, and it does give us a few things that we can require that aren't required by state law. And that's the big one I was mentioning earlier is that, uh, we want the ADU to, at least on the exterior, to be consistent with the architecture, uh, of the primary dwelling. So, um, I think it's important that we go forward with the, with the ordinance, um, and that it does, does give the city some benefit in terms of controlling the look of the ADU. But all of these other things that Stacy just went through don't have a lot of, we don't have a lot of wiggle room on those.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Mr. Yamas, questions, comments?
Uh, just your clarification that there's no requirement for additional parking?
So for parking, um, there are certain stipulations. Um, so if it's a junior accessory dwelling unit, so say you're converting your garage into a junior accessory dwelling unit, you're not required to provide another parking space. Um, and if it's an efficiency unit, no parking is required. Um, I'm just gonna pull up that section.
Also, the state is big on if it's close to a mass transit, uh, hub. No parking is required. So they're, they're envisioning these being built close to mass transits where people are gonna be on foot and so they're, they're not requiring parking spaces for those. We don't have any of those here in Los Banos, I don't think.
Uh, it also requires, we're only allowed to require one parking spot per accessory dwelling unit of one bedroom or more.
Maximum, yeah. I think the old requirement was per bedroom.
Yes.
And we had to cut that down to a maximum of one.
That was it. Thank you very much.
I think also if you convert your garage, you're not required to create another parking space either.
Right.
So, who knows where all these ideas are coming from, but they're, they're coming at us. Uh, so there you go. There, there must be some logic to it, maybe. Um, planning and Stacy and I aren't looking at it from that standpoint. We're just looking at trying to make sure that, uh, we're in compliance, so we're not out of compliance on our, uh, housing element. And like I indicated, we have to send this to HCD for their review. And all the ones I've seen that have been sent to them, they typically have some comments. So we've, we've attempted to use examples from other jurisdiction that passed the smell test with HCD, so we'll, we'll see what we get. We were hoping that we don't have to bring this back to you in six or eight months, that HCD saw something in there that they didn't like. They're mainly looking for way, things in there that might be prohibitive of ADUs, and I don't think we have anything like that in ours.
Thank you. So, uh, it sounds to me like the state is trying to create more housing, essentially. More housing per square foot. And all these different ordinances and different requirements, recommendations to build more, you know, they require, they require us to, uh, add more R2 to our general plan. And so, the, now, uh, Mr. Vaughn, what would, not that we would wanna be out of compliance, but what would be the consequences if we were?
Uh, HCD is stepping up their compliance on your housing element, and they're actually, they could be withholding C2BG funding, and I believe, uh, there was a city in the southern area, it might have been even Huntington Beach or something. You can also generate a fairly large fine for being out of compliance. So it's, it's not worth the pain over maybe so far a couple of ADUs per year. Uh, limited, limited activity of ADUs.
Okay.
Though, though the state, also just to clarify, the state's pretty clear that they are the default. Where there is a discrepancy between our ordinance and state law, state law is the default. So even if we're not in compliance, technically state law is the default. We'd be required to follow it anyway.
That goes to the doctrine of preem, preeminence, right?
Preemption.
Preemption.
They're, yeah, they're the king in the world of ADUs right now. And yes, their, their, their stated goal is to create more housing during our current, what they term the California Housing Crisis. I think this has more effect on the metropolitan areas than it will on the rural areas. Where, and I think eventually they're looking at doing away with R1 zoning.
Oh, okay.
I, I mean, I, I think that's the trend. That's what planners are, that's what planners are talking about on all of the seminars is that uh, the state of California is looking to do away with R1 zoning.
That one-
In, in their, in their eminent wisdom, I, you know. Please don't take the fact that Stacy and I are bringing this forward, that we totally are in step and agree with what the state of California, uh, is requiring us to do.
Yes, indeed. I think we have a pretty good understanding of that, Mr. Vaughn. Alright, um, seeing, uh, it seems like everybody's gotten their questions answered. Um, we've had a good discussion here and we don't seem to have a, a great deal of, of choice in the matter. Uh, shall I entertain a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance number one one nine zero?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, um, with reluctance, I will make the motion on this ordinance. Um, I'd like to make a motion on ordinance eleven ninety to waive the first reading. As in it.
Very, very good.
As, I'm sorry, as read by title.
Thank you. Uh, I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lewis. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lewis, and a second by Councilmember Lambert to waive the first reading of ordinance one one nine zero as read by title. Ms. Mallon, roll call.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Ms. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number eleven ninety as read by title.
Second? Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, Yamas here. I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lewis and a second by Councilmember Yamas to introduce ordinance number one one nine zero as read. Ms. Mallon, roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Excellent presentation, and we'll move on to item nine. Consideration of a Solid Waste Rate Review Study and Proposition Two Eighteen Notice to Commercial Customers. And we will go to Acting Public Works Director and City Engineer, Mr. Possesch.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, last December, the council authorized an amendment to our professional services agreement with R3 Consulting Group to prepare a refuse rate study. Uh, as you all are aware, we have a new solid waste collection agreement with Mid Valley Disposal. And we wanted to make sure that, uh, our rates would actually generate revenues that are sufficient to cover the costs under the new contract. Uh, this evening, this evening, we are presenting the rate study. And we are recommending that the city council direct staff to initiate the Proposition Two Eighteen process for updating the commercial solid waste rates. These are the only rates that are affected, and we will get into that discussion a little bit later in, in detail. Uh, based on the findings of the rate study as required by the California Proposition Two Eighteen, the right to vote on taxes. Now, Article thirteen D of the California Constitution, also known uh, as Proposition Two Eighteen, requires that the city clearly demonstrate the basis for all property-related rates and charges to customers and property owners. The city is required at a minimum to provide a forty-five day notification of the proposed rate adjustments and inform the customers and property owners of their right to submit a written protest. If the city receives protests from a majority of the property owners and customers, then the rate increases cannot be adopted. The council's direction to the staff to send out the notifications as we are requesting here does not change the rates. It merely starts the process based on the Proposition Two Eighteen. And this will lead us to the public hearing on June second. Uh, as I mentioned, the R3 Consulting Group prepared their report, and is the study under report, and uh, Mr. Garth Schultz is here tonight to present the study to you. And I'd like to introduce Garth and turn it over to him. Mr. Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Possesch. I'm Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, Acting City Manager, Garth Schultz with R3 Consulting Group. I'm here to present on the results of the solid waste rate study. Thank you for the slide deck. Um, we were the firm who, uh, both supported the city in the RFP process that resulted in selection and consequent award of the new franchise agreement to Mid Valley Disposal. And I understand they're up next in your agenda this evening. Um, this rate study, uh, in, in the end, i- is essentially a win-win-win on a number of levels for the council um, and for the community, um, and I'll get into the details of that here shortly. Um, if you can go to the next slide, I'll provide an overview of the presentation. So we'll give you an overview of what the rate study found. Um, we'll cover, um, how residential rates, uh, will be changing over the course of the coming couple of years. Um, but we'll underscore that residential rates do not at this time require re-noticing. The city did issue a Proposition Two Eighteen Notice in two thousand nineteen as a part of a combined notice for your water, sewer, and solid waste rates. And residential rates are still covered under that notice and don't require additional adjustments. Uh, the commercial rates, uh, however, do require re-noticing primarily because there's a wider range of rates, new services being offered to commercial and multifamily customers that, uh, haven't been contemplated in the past by the city. And that's as a result of the new agreement with Mid Valley Disposal. Then we'll move to conclusion and Q and A. Next slide, please. So the city does periodically conduct, uh, rate studies for its utilities, including solid waste, uh, sewer and water. Um, the last solid waste rate study was conducted in two thousand and eleven. Uh, so it is, you know, was due, and this was an appropriate time to do it, consistent with the new agreement with Mid Valley Disposal, which is shown here in the second rule. It starts on July one, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, so this is very much around providing the authorization for Mid Valley to charge, uh, commercial and multifamily customers whenever referred to commercial throughout the rest of this presentation. I do take it to mean of both of those groups and the type of service offered. Uh, same for both of those, uh, types of customers. Given that Mid Valley Disposal, under the agreement, will be directly billing for commercial multifamily customers, you need to have, uh, or, um, uh, sorry, distracted by the comment. Uh, you, you do need to have the ability to be able to have approved rates covering all of the new services under that agreement, um, which are, uh, uh, offered now to those customers. Um, as a note, the city will continue to bill for single-family residential customers, and again, additional noticing of those rates is not necessary at this time. Next slide, please. Um, so the commercial solid waste rates do not include the same types of services that are being provided by Mid Valley Disposal. There are both new sizes of containers being offered, new frequency of services that are being offered, um, as well as rates for additional recycling and organics, uh, services. So there's three types of streams that customers receive. Garbage container, the recycling container and organics. And there's a wider range of services being offered by Mid Valley Disposal that were not previously offered to the city with your prior contract. Um, in order for Mid Valley Disposal to charge those rates, the city does need to approve those new rates via the Prop Two Eighteen process Mr. Possesch described. Next slide, please. So when we conducted the rate study, we looked at a number of, of factors, including the city's current revenues from rates that are being charged to customers, expenses through the solid waste fund, including the expected expenses to Mid Valley Disposal, expenses for city administration such as billing, uh, and overhead, um, as well as, uh, direct solid waste expenses conducted through public works. Um, we also looked at the expenses relating to the current, uh, closure of the city's, uh, landfill and the post-closure expenses. All of those were taken into account as well as existing fund balance in the fund, uh, as we conducted the study. One thing we found is that the solid waste fund is quite healthy at this point in time. Um, with about seventy-eight percent of revenues, uh, or seventy-eight percent of cash available, uh, to cover operating revenues. It's a pretty high balance. Um, normally, we recommend a minimum balance of about twenty-five percent. You have some cushion and some flexibility, which is especially valuable, um, given some of the changes in the solid waste industry coming forward. Um, and the new rates and services that are going to affect it. This is a good starting position. Um, they can mitigate rate increases both now and in the future. Uh, as I've described already, the single-family residential rates that were set in two thousand and nineteen are sufficient and can remain in place. And those are essentially, uh, the, that Prop Two Eighteen notice from two thousand and nineteen said that, uh, solid waste rates can increase up to a maximum of three point five percent per year, uh, set annually at CPI. For this year, and I'll cover this in the coming slides, would be a rate increase, uh, on existing rates of one point five seven percent. So minimal and consistent with the prior notice. Next slide, please. So these next several slides just give the, the council and the community an understanding of where residential rates are going. Um, again, these are not the subject of the Prop Two Eighteen notice that, uh, we're asking the council to, direct staff to mail today, nor would these require adoption at the rate hearing in June. Uh, these are simply just to give you a sense of what will happen going forward. Uh, so I covered the fact that single-family rates overall will increase by one point five seven percent. That's below the maximum threshold set by the prior notice thing. With the exception of the ninety-six gallon cart, and I'll cover that on the next slide. There will be in the future, uh, under the contract with Mid Valley Disposal, separate charges for customers for cart exchange. So if someone said they want to replace a cart because it's smelly or dirty, there will be future charges for that. Um, there is a, a rate, a compensation rate due to Mid Valley Disposal for such cart exchanges, as well as for contamination fees. Those won't be able to be charged directly by the city until adopted, either through a Prop Two Eighteen process or potentially through, say, the city's master fee schedule. At this point in time, we're not anticipating that those would be significant charges, and again, the city has sufficient fund balance to cover that. Which is also a, a kind of a COVID nineteen mitigating, uh, approach here where it can, you can phase in over time the ability to directly charge customers for those. Uh, but the city will have, uh, nominal amounts owed to Mid Valley Disposal for cart exchanges and contamination fees if they apply. Next slide, please.
Um, can I take a quick minute? Because I'm hearing some background-
Yeah, I think that might be in my end. Hold on a moment.
Thank you.
One of the joys of working from home, my apologies. Um, regarding the ninety-six gallon cart, as you noted on the prior slide, um, those will not be going up by the one point five seven percent. This relates back to the council's action in early March, setting the standard- This relates back to the council's action in early March, setting the standard size for garbage carts for commercial customers at the 96-gallon level. Currently, the 96-gallon cart is nearly $20 more a month than the next size down, the 64-gallon cart. But with the transition to the 96-gallon cart as the standard size, we're essentially able to drop that rate substantially. So the 96-gallon cart will be available and offered as the standard size for all residential customers, whereas most are in the 64-gallon size now. Those customers will not need to pay the current 96-gallon rate. In fact, the 96-gallon rate will only be $1.49 more than the 64-gallon rate coming into this rate year. And thinking of this another way, if you're a customer that subscribes to the standard size, you have a 64-gallon now, come July 1, you'll have a 96-gallon, you're going to be getting 50% more garbage service for $2.13 a month more. So that is the outcome of the council's action there. As decided by council and directed to staff in March, this is a strategy to reduce illegal dumping and litter, as well as to reduce contamination placement of garbage in recycling containers due to lack of capacity in people's homes. So this is a positive outcome as a result of the new contract with Mid Valley Disposal and the council's concurrence with moving forward on the 96-gallon cart. Next slide, please. So this is what the residential rates would look like coming up for July 1, 2021, as well as the following couple of years. Those following years were contemplated by the notice from 2019. You did a five-year notice at that time, and so these rates are, essentially, will go into effect without further council action under that prior noticing. New rates would need to be re-noticed for the July 1, 2024 year, but that's also the time at which the city's regularly scheduled rate study for water and sewer utilities would also take place. So as you can see, for the 64-gallon cart, nominal changes consistent with the CPI inflation factor. For the 96-gallon cart, you can see the drop from the current rates on July 1, 2020 of 60-70 down to 42.59. So that's a savings to the 96-gallon cart, providing the opportunity for more volume for very little money for customers throughout the city. The other rates shown below are discretionary voluntary rates for additional services. Those are also just going up at the standard CPI. Next slide, please, which brings us into the commercial rates, which is really the main meat of the requested action of the council. And there's some important changes to commercial rates overall. The primary one is that the commercial garbage rates and services offered by MBB include, at no additional cost to the city or to customers, the base level of recycling and organics collection. Putting this another way, if today a commercial business or a multifamily complex wishes to subscribe to both garbage and recycling and organics, you're paying three different rates for those. I'll have a couple of slides that demonstrate this. Starting January or July 1, you'll subscribe to a base level of garbage or any level of garbage service. It will come inclusive of recyclables and organics, and you don't need to pay extra just to have those services. This is a key strategy for compliance with certain state laws. Those are shown here. These are state laws that require subscription to recycling and organics by commercial and multifamily entities and are taking effect now and do require compliance both by the city in terms of its service offerings to its residents and businesses, but also for those folks that generate solid waste, meaning the commercial businesses and the multifamily complexes, they do have to subscribe to and utilize those services. So the proposed rates that are part of this study and proposed notice include the cost of those minimum levels of recyclables and organics at no rate of cost. As an outcome of this, all commercial rates do need to be noticed and heard via the public services. But in most cases, rates will in fact be going down with that noticing. Show the next slide, please. So the rates that are being proposed are the rates that are in MBB's contract. The rates for future years are proposed at the maximum CPI increase, this is consistent with the city's maximum CPI increase in its noticing, 3.5% per year. Very few of the garbage rates are increasing whatsoever, and we'll list out which ones those are. There are about 58 customers subscribing to a 64-gallon garbage cart. That garbage rate will increase about 55 a month, it's about a 3.75% increase. There are five customers subscribing to a one-cubic yard bin, going up about $3 a month, 1.5%, and about 21 customers subscribing to a six-cubic yard container. That's a very large size, it's going up $14 a month, about 4.5%. Those increases are all taken into account, essentially, in apples and oranges comparison, current garbage rate and future garbage rate inclusive of the base levels of recycling and organics. So essentially, folks are going to be getting more for their money, the effect being, in almost all cases, more service for less cost. I do want to note, there had been a prior 1.5 cubic yard bin available for garbage and recycling that was under the soon-to-expire agreement with Republic Services. That is not a size that's being offered under the Mid Valley Disposal agreement. There are not many customers subscribe to these. Those customers will have the choice to downgrade to one cubic yard and save money, or to upgrade to a two-cubic yard, which may be a little more cost, based on the fact that they have these included recycling and organic services. Downgrading seems more likely the option for those customers. Next slide. So this gives you a sense of what the new bundled rates look like in comparison to your current rates. So you can see for a customer subscribing to a 64-gallon garbage cart now, they pay $35.57 a month. In order to comply with the state law, they would need to subscribe to a separate recycling and organics cart, each costing $5.71, for a total monthly cost of $46.99 under the new rates as proposed. Recycling and organics is included, and the new rate's $36.90. So though the individual garbage rate apparently goes up, total rate to customer in order to have all three streams of solid waste, all three containers, is actually going down on the whole. So it's the savings. Next slide. Same effect is true with the one-cubic yard garbage bin, going up if you look just at the garbage rate, total cost to customer going down, given the bundled services for recycling and organics, which are required under state law. And then the final slide, this is the one example of a slight increase in the overall comparisons, six cubic yards. You can see the current rate and the proposed rate in the total monthly bill comparison. These 21 customers that are currently subscribed to this level of service are the only ones that would see any sort of increase, and this is around a $3 per month increase, around 1%. Next slide. And this is just what things look like over time for those same customers, so you can get a sense of the proposed increases over the course of the next three years. Again, that's pegged to the total maximum CPI that can be adjusted per Mid Valley Disposal's contract of 3.5%. Actual rates may be lower if the CPI numbers come in lower. We would be asked in the public hearing in June to adopt maximum rates, with the knowledge that actual rates may be billed at a lower amount. Excellent, final slide for me. Just to make it perfectly clear, all other commercial garbage rates are decreasing as a result of this noticing. The reason noticing is necessary is just that there are new types of rates for new types of services that have not previously been adopted and approved by the council and the city. A final note I will make, for those that may have noticed this in our report or in the tables that are included, there are rates for additional recycling and organics volume that apparently go up, but those additional volumes would be in addition to the base levels of services that are currently provided via the rates. Those rates, as currently put into the city's rate schedule, do not cover the cost of service. The rates for these additional services are voluntary and not directly tied to a base level of need, and they may not be needed. Though if folks can subscribe to the base level of garbage with the minimum level of recycling and organics included, then there's no need to subscribe to additional services. And with that, I will hand it back to Mr. Posses for taking some, and hopefully the next slide covers the limited actions.
Thank you. Thank you, Garth. The following steps that are needed for this process to continue, the first one is what we are asking the council to consider tonight, which is to direct the staff to initiate the Proposition 218 process. And again, your affirmative vote does not increase rates, it simply directs the staff to proceed with the process of mailing out the notifications to the commercial customers. The second step is actually for the staff to send out the notices. And again, this must happen at least 45 days before the date of the public hearing. Notices are attached to the back of the staff report, they are prepared in both English and Spanish. A local vendor, UPS Store, has been contacted, they're on notice, they have the notifications and the mailing list for all the commercial customers, and will be able to start printing and mailing out the notifications in the morning. And based on that 45-day notification period and the fact that we would like to come back on June 2 for the rate hearing, we have until April 17 to finish mailing out, and we will be able to do that to comply with that requirement. The notices describe the reasons for the proposed rate increases, the amount of the proposed rate increases, the basis for the rate calculations, protest procedures, date, time, and location of the public hearing. Any person who wishes to protest the adoption of the proposed rate increases must submit a written protest prior to the close of the public hearing, and generally, this is done in the form of a letter. The final step for the council is to hold a hearing on June 2 on the proposed rate increases. At the conclusion of the public hearing, if a majority protest has not occurred against the adoption, the city council may adopt the proposed rates at that time. Now, with that, Garth and I are ready to answer any questions. I'd like to bring to your attention that the finance department has been a part of this process, working with us jointly throughout the whole process, and I would like to ask our finance director, Sonia Williams, to join in and participate in answering your questions.
Thank you so much. Well, we'll go to council. Mr. Jones?
No questions at this time. Thanks, man.
And Mr. Lambert?
I've got one question. So for the commercial, as we're going to be calling the dumpsters, you're saying there's only a 1.5 cubic and a six-cubic yard that's going to be available?
There's actually many sizes that will be available at many frequencies of collections per week. So you have a one-cubic yard, a two-cubic yard, three, four, and six, all available for garbage, as well as for recycling. I don't think they go up quite as high for organics. Many of those sizes were not sizes you previously had available. So I just showed on the slides the one and the six, because those are the only ones where the individual garbage rate is going up at all. Others that you have currently in your rate schedule are going down. So you have a number of sizes that are available.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert.
Okay. My question is, there's just showing on the regular gray, I assume this is the gray can pick up a 64-gallon or a 96-gallon. And we have a couple of our communities within Los Manos that have smaller cans, and the council, along with Public Works, had made a decision that if a resident does not have multiple people in their homes and only uses a small can for garbage, that they don't have to have the 64-gallon. But I assume the rate is going to be the same regardless of whether it's 64-gallon or smaller?
That would be my assumption as well. The information provided in the city's existing rate schedule doesn't contemplate anything smaller than a 64. And I was actually unaware of the fact that there would be members of the community who might have something smaller. Your existing rate schedule in Proposition 218 notice does list the 64-gallon cart as the smallest size, so that I would assume would be the minimum charge, although that may be a question for the city's billing.
Okay. Fred, do you have anything on that?
No, I don't. I'd like to ask Sonia to participate in this.
So that would be up to Mid Valley. Fred, it should be in the contract on whether or not you negotiated a lower rate, and that I'm not aware of.
All right. The definitive answer on that will be on the next presentation. The president of Mid Valley will be here, and we can pose that question to him. So we have a straight answer based on their partner.
Okay.
That is acceptable.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Thank you. And we'll move on to Mr. Yamas.
Thank you, Mr. Vera. I had a question regarding the exchange of carts. I was trying to say, charge for contamination, et cetera. Is there also a charge for leakage or unserviceability?
The way I understand it from the Mid Valley Disposal contract, the only charges would be for exchange, which I think probably could be construed for some sort of customer-caused damage, not Mid Valley-caused damage, or some condition that would leave that cart to be unreparable or unserviceable, as it's listed in the agreement, just as a cart exchange
So if it's damaged through usage, there's going to be a fee, or there's not?
I think that this might be one we should ask Mid Valley Disposal around their application of that, but the way I would understand it typically is, it would be, if the customer is requesting an exchange, then the fee would apply. If the truck causes damage to the container, then that's on Mid Valley Disposal to provide replacement at its own cost.
Okay, I'll follow up. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So I don't have any questions. They've all been asked and answered. So shall I entertain a motion to give staff direction?
Mayor, council member, Labor here.
Thank you.
I make a motion for the consideration.
And that is to give staff direction to initiate the Prop 218 process, correct?
Correct.
Very good. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilmember Lambert, and a second by Mayor Portman Lewis, to give staff direction to initiate the Prop 218 notice as listed in the agenda. Roll call, Ms. Maloney?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
No.
Doria?
Yes. Motion carried, four to one. Councilmember Yamas dissenting. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item 10. And this is the presentation by Mid Valley Disposal LLC. For that, we will go back to Acting Public Works Director, Mr. Posses.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you were voting, I had a chance to reach for the agreement with Mid Valley. If it's acceptable, I will go to a portion of their agreement to answer the question that came up as far as the 32-gallon and the cost for it. In In section 7.01.1 of their agreement, and I'm reading directly from it, "Optional 32 or 64 gallon carts shall be provided at the same recipient's request, at the service recipient's request. The 32 and 64 gallon carts shall be at the same contractor's maximum service rate for 64 gallon carts." I just wanted to bring that up. I had a chance to find the agreement here on my desk. And with that, I will go to the presentation here. This item is for information only, and no action is requested from the council. As a little background, in November 2020, the council approved a contract with Mid Valley Disposal LLC for residential and commercial garbage, recyclable materials, and organic waste collection services. The contract will become effective on July 1st, 2021. And since then, we have had a number of meetings with Mid Valley Disposal to coordinate the transition process. And I'm happy to report that it's been a wonderful collaborative effort thus far. We are looking forward to July 1st to roll around and for the new collection services to begin. The contract with Mid Valley calls for presentations to the council during the transition process. And this is the first presentation. The next one is scheduled for May 5. So this afternoon, we have Mr. Joe Kalpikoff, president of Mid Valley Disposal, to give a presentation about the transition progress, their company, and their services. Mr. Kalpikoff?
Thank you, Fred. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members and staff. Joseph Kalpikoff, president and owner of Mid Valley Disposal. I'm excited to be here tonight to kind of explain to you the background of what's been going on in the last few months with preparation to start services on July 1st. You know, there's a lot of work transition planning. Next slide, please. So tonight, I'm going to go over kind of the planning stages, what we've been doing, a little bit about the transition and how that's going to work, and the actual implementation of new carts, new bins, new trucks throughout the community, and kind of where to find us in the community in the future. Next slide. So as of November, the second week in November, we started a biweekly meeting with city staff. And it began with Public Works, and we've had thirteen meetings together between Mid Valley Disposal and Fred and William in Public Works. With those meetings, we went over transition planning, education material, terms of the agreement, and how the future of Los Banos Solid Waste Collection is going to take place. We also met with finance, Sonia and Kim, and met with some of the code enforcement on some areas of concern, overloaded containers. And that's where the waste assessments started. So we had staff members on site. We've hired our first recycling coordinator back in January. And Jessica's been on scene with the multifamily and looking at some of these overloaded generators. And so we have a good idea of where they're at and where to target some of those problem areas. We've also taken a look at some of the residential growth. We've gone through some of the permits that have been taking place and what new homes, where they're going in. And that's going to affect our future route. So we want to plan for that in the beginning. We've also met with the current hauler and discussed transition with employees and with accounts and some of the little details that go in with some of the commercial accounts, some of the locks, some of the keys, gate codes, things like that. So we've been able to get some data from them, and we're internalizing that data now. Next slide. So what, you know, once the contract was executed, we got the green light to go. And we ordered all the trucks, we ordered the containers. We ordered thirty-six thousand carts. Council member Lewis, yes, we did order some 32 gallon carts. We've ordered 64 gallon carts. And that was done through our waste assessments within the community. So I'm proud to announce that our trucks are arriving this week, and we will be ready to go. And so we're stickering them up right now, and we're putting the GPS units on them. We've also negotiated and signed a lease. So we are going to have a downtown office. And that office will be there to have education material. We'll have customer service reps at that office. And customers can kind of come in and take a look. They ask questions. We'll have answers for them. We've also met with some of the current employees. We had a day at the park on a Saturday where we invited kind of an open house. I know COVID has been a little bit of a challenge for us with the restrictions in place. But we've, you know, through Zoom, through some social distancing meetings, we've been able to meet with them, get to know those guys. And we're actually coordinating with Republic and their HR department. So we've also scheduled the container delivery. And how this is going to work, so the council kind of understands it, is that we, both Republic and Mid Valley, have hired the same contractor for the implementation of the residential containers. And that's going to take place in June. And about three to four weeks is what we project. So the contractor will deliver three brand-new carts to every home. And they'll remove the three carts at the same time. So there'll be a seamless transition. And with those carts, the new carts, they will have a welcome packet from Mid Valley Disposal, which will have a lot of the rules of what goes in each cart. It's going to have all the services, the community cleanup events, the on-call customer bulky items, everything they need to know. If they're going to be a new pickup day, we may have to transition a few homes due to the new growth. So we want to balance those routes. So all that information will be inside a new start kit that will be delivered to each home. With that, there's also the infield waste assessment, waste audits that we're currently ongoing. So we have staff members out there. We know which communities right now have the 32 gallon carts. We know which communities have the 64 gallon carts. So in preparation with that, we'll be able to implement seamlessly. The carts will start arriving in May. So in about thirty to forty-five days, 36,000 carts will arrive. We have at least an A and D facility, which is assembly and delivery. They will show up there, the carts will be built, and then they'll start going out from there. Next slide. Okay, so we have done some outreach, mailed out a welcome introduction letter from Mid Valley Disposal, kind of tell a little bit about the company. We've also procured a QR code. And what that is, is most cell phones now, you know, it was kind of interesting as we went through, got to a restaurant, they went, everybody had these QR codes. I got to know them. We figured that's a great place to start. And so you can scan that QR code, goes to our website, and it has a landing page for Los Banos. And with that landing page, there's some FAQs. There's also a form that they can enter their information. And we can sign them up for automatic education with the new stuff that's going on, new programs, when the events are taking place. So we are currently actively accepting new customer forms, and we've got a good list going so far. We've got some work to do though, so we need a few more residents and some more businesses. Next slide. And so, you know, 1383, that's this line. The last presentation kind of went over it a little bit. But one of the big advantages of 1383 and the programs we're going to line out is that the residential food can go inside the green waste cart. So it's not just for lawn clippings, it's not just for trees, branches, but they can actually use scrap food inside their carts at home. Businesses will also get it as well. And it's an extremely detailed plan for California. And, you know, it's good to know that your new service agreement will be 100% compliance with this new regulation. And we'll talk more about this regulation down the road. There's a lot to look at, a lot to do. But do know that it starts January 2022, and we will be fully compliant, and that's the good thing. Next slide. So there is a picture of our local office. It's located at 502 I Street. And we actually took possession of that. Actually, we take possession of it on the 5th, which was Monday. And we're going to gear up, get some desks, some computers inside there. We've got some staff coming in. And so we're ready to go. That's going to be, it's exciting for us to have a local downtown office, as I mentioned earlier. Next up, we're going to be at the Spring Fair. I believe that is April 17th. We will have a booth out there where we'll have some education, and some staff members to answer any questions that the public may have, and just to get to know us, get to know Mid Valley Disposal, who we are, what we're about. And then the last thing, we're going to have a job fair coming up, and we will announce the exact date and times of that. And we're going to have it downtown in our local office. So once we get that fully ready to go with the computers and some desks in there, we will have a job fair there, and we'll post it on social media, the city's website. And we'll get some applicants for customer service reps, a dispatcher, and maybe some drivers as well. So with that, we are excited, we're prepared, we're ready to go. And you may have some questions. So I'm here to answer any questions, and Fred as well. But I just want to, the last thing, we enjoyed working with your staff with all these meetings, both Fred, William, Sonia. It's been refreshing. It's been great. I think the team's in place, and we're ready for a successful transition.
Joe, I just want to make sure that you go over the month of June as the cans are exchanged, and your name is out on the cans. Who is providing the service? And what happens if there are any issues? Who do they call? They see your name, but I don't believe you are the one servicing the cans, correct?
You know, thank you, Fred. That is correct. There will be a two- to three-week transition where the carts have to be delivered and exchanged, and Republic will be servicing some of those streets. Again, it'll be a little bit with the three weeks. And as we get to the end, it will be us picking them up starting in July 1st. So there will be that little transition there. We're gearing up, working with the current contractor. So it's a common way to do a large implementation like Los Banos. And that's the way. And you can't do it in one day. There's too many homes, thirty-six thousand carts. So there is that three-week transition period where Republic will be servicing our carts.
Thank you very much. Well, we'll go to council for questions. Mr. Jones?
Joe, thank you for the presentation there. We can't wait for you guys to start. So if tomorrow was the start day, we'd greatly appreciate it. But we know that's not possible at this moment. But yeah, we're looking forward to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Lambert?
Thank you also, Joe, for the presentations. We look forward for the exchange.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have just a couple of questions. When you were talking about the organic waste, is that going to be deposited in the green can where the grass is going forward when that particular date starts?
Yeah, that is correct. Your food scraps will go with your green waste, and it'll be collected in the same truck together. And that material will go back to our composting facility. It'll get processed into compost.
Okay. And then the other question is, I understand the city told us that your company would probably be helping us with some educational material going out to the residents before the exchange starts to remind them about, you know, about your policy, how you want things done, and also for us to remind our customers to, when they're to put their cans out, and then at the end of the day, that they're supposed to put their cans behind their fence, not to leave them out in front of the garage or on the side of the garage.
But we do have two more mailers that we have scheduled to go out, and we will definitely make sure that that information is in there. You know, we can't advertise the food waste in the Republic's green cart yet, because they can't collect it, unfortunately. So that transition will happen when we deliver the introduction package. So the introduction package will have all that information on what exact materials can go in each cart. But the FAQs on when to put the carts out, when to take them back in, yeah, we'll definitely do that.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Yamas?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess you're up. Just had a follow-up on that question as to the charge of exchanging a cart due to breakage. How is determined as to the cause of the breakage? And what constitutes contamination?
Okay, let me take the cart first. First of all, these are going to be brand-new carts. And they all have a 10-year warranty. So if it is damaged, if it's burnt, things like that, there is a one-year, one annual cart switch-out at no cost. So that's covered. There's a breakage on that. Obviously, we're going to have the cart manufacturer replace it. 10-year warranty, so we don't see a lot of problems or issues with that moving forward. Contamination. There is a contamination warning, number one. Obviously, there's no point of doing any kind of contamination fees without a warning and proper education. But it's putting, let's say, bag trash in your green waste cart, right? That was contamination. Or it's putting materials that don't belong in each one. And again, we will have specific guidelines that go out multiple times on what goes in each. There's definitely going to be, I call it a grace period, where this new program's going out. We don't plan on doing any of that except additional education.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, we're very pleased to see you coming on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Lewis?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I do have one other question.
Sure.
Well, it's a combination. When you made the original presentation to council, or at least when we visited our service yard, your trucks were there. I thought I had recalled you saying that there was some sort of electronical identification of the can to the address so that when your staff is picking it up, they'll know that that can belongs to the address where it's located. And also on the trash container tops, it would show exactly what kind of materials can go in the trash can so that it wouldn't be confusing for the residents.
Yeah, two questions. I'll answer the carts and how they're tracked, right? So there are RFID chips in there. And each cart has their own specific number. And in the trucks, there's a computer. And when it tips the cart, there's a reader on the arm. When it goes up, it tips it, it reads that number. It knows that cart was serviced, it knows when it was serviced, and where it was serviced. So we are rolling out all the new technology. So they all have them in there. That's part of the implementation process. When they deliver the three carts, they scan each cart, it gets assigned to that address. We get that data, it goes already in our system.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. That's good to hear. Technology is moving so fast, making all our jobs more efficient. And we're pleased to see you implementing that. This item today requires no action. It is just informational only. And so we want to thank Mr. Kalpikoff and Mr. Possash for the presentation. And we'll be seeing you a lot very soon.
We will.
With that, we'll move on to item 11. More good news. New police department facility update. For that, we go to acting city manager Breezy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council members, mayor. I will do a very brief introduction. We're really excited about this project. I want to thank each and every one of you personally for your support. You approved tonight, during the consent agenda, the submission of an application with I Bank for the funding of the facility. That is an enormous step forward for us, and it is somewhere we have never been before. So congratulations on being the council that was able to put that together to move it forward into a further step than we've ever gone. Tonight, we have a really brief update. It's one of the many several updates that we hope to provide to you and the residents of our community as we move forward with the design and the future construction of the facility. I see Scott Murphy with Banner and his colleague Russ Taylor, the architect, and acting chief head are here. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Scott and allow him to introduce himself and his staff and get into the presentation. Again, thank you all very much for supporting us in this effort. It means a lot. Scott?
Great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Chief Breezy, city manager, acting city manager, Chief Breezy, and mayor and city council. We really appreciate the opportunity to provide this update for you. My name is Scott Murphy. I'm the project director on this project, presenting the city of Los Banes. We were hired by the city of Los Banes to provide project management, construction management, inspection services, as well as bridging architect services. And so with that, we're just tickled to death to be a part of this project. It's gone extremely well. City staff has been outstanding to work with, as, as well as the police department has just been outstanding to work with. So I'm excited to share a little bit about where we are now and what's upcoming, and talk about what's gonna happen here in the near future. So with that, I'll turn it over to Russ Taylor with Taylor, Taylor Architect Groups.
Thanks, Scott. And thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor and fellow councilmen, councilwomen. It's an honor to be part of this project. We were selected as the bridging architects through Banner. They, Banner is who our contractors with. And what a bridging architect is, is that we are providing the design services to the firehead of the police department, and working closely with them. We were handed a program, basically a space allocation program at the beginning of our services, always to try to make sure that we didn't go over square, the square foot allowances for each individual department. So far, we're on track. We've, we've hit pretty much every one of those square footages, and we've, we've designed the, the station. Right now, the main building sits at about twenty-six thousand square feet and some change. And then there's an outbuilding that has a couple of car stalls in it that would be vehicle evidence, and then some other evidence storage, which is in a separate building. So we're, we're still under the, I think, twenty-eight thousand square feet is our max. And right now, we're right about there. And I think we've produced a, a floor plan that's very efficient. And I guess if there's the next slide, maybe we can go over that, or the site plan next.
I think we're gonna have to turn it over to Jason. Oh, okay. Acting chief Jason, please take over.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, first I gotta tell you, I'm honored to be serving as your acting police chief, and I'm excited to be part of this project team. The city's team includes acting city manager Gary Breezy, finance director Sonia Williams, fire chief Mason Hurley, community economic development director Stacy Suzette Elms, acting public works director Fred Possashk, and from our police department team commander Ray Reyna and our police services manager Brenda Gary. This team's been working in collaboration with Banner Construction Management and the Taylor Group for months. The other day, Brenda and I, our police services manager, were having a conversation. She described this as one of the best project groups she's ever been part of. I gotta tell you, I agree with her. The dynamic of this team has allowed us to accomplish a lot in a very short amount of time, and I'm very proud of, of the work that this team has done. Next slide. To go into the history of our project, the police department staff currently works out of two facilities. The main facility is located at nine forty-five Fifth Street, and has housed police staff since nineteen sixty-nine. Back in nineteen ninety-nine, the city purchased the police annex, an old bank building approximately half a block away from the main facility at five thirty-five J Street. This facility houses our detectives, code enforcement, gang unit, IT staff, and the department's crime analyst. Operating out of two facilities has been inefficient, and has made operations within the police department challenging over the years, and future growth is not supported. The city first considered construction of a new police facility back in nineteen ninety-nine as part of the Merced County Government Center. The second consideration came in two thousand and six, when the city considered building a new police facility at Mercy Springs and Scripps. This would be where the new Mercy Springs Elementary School is now located. And both projects were canceled due to lack of funding at that time. Bringing us up to two thousand and eighteen, we renewed our effort, and the city initiated a needs assessment, the development of a new police department. The city council approved funding on October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty. Banner Construction Management was named as the project managers for the new police facility, and they will oversee pre-designed services, design, and construction management for this project. Next slide, please. On our project site, project site, our new police department project site is located on G Street, and this is just west of the new Merced County Superior Court Building, and that sits on three point six acres. The location of the site creates a criminal justice campus environment, and provide our residents and staff with convenient access to both the court and police department in one central location. So that's, that's pretty exciting for us, the PD team, as well as our community. The campus environment concept may grow in the future as other criminal justice agencies look to build on neighboring sites. And that's also a very exciting notion for us as this project continues to develop. At this time, I'm gonna turn it back over to Russ, and he'll talk about his work on the project design on the next slide.
Thank you, chief. So I got a little ahead of myself there. This is, this is a proposed elevation sketch of the front elevation. This is what you would see if you were standing on G Street looking south. And it's, it's a very kind of a simple floor plan, and so the elevation is, I think it's a classical elevation, but it's, but it's also fairly simple. It's gonna be constructed, the exterior wall's gonna be constructed out of concrete tiltup. And then we're gonna add some pattern and some color to that, that concrete with the, with paint and some embedded reveals in the concrete. We've got a prominent signage space facing G Street along with flag, and then flanked by some palm trees. They're on the right of the screen. Next slide. This is the project site plan. Again, north is up along G Street, and so the public parking would flank G Street. Also, there would be the refuge trash receptacles, which would be outside of the secure area. And then everything south of the face of the building is behind gates. And so all of the parking spaces and evidence, the evidence annex, I'll call it, is all south of the perimeter. Solid wall facing north, and then we hope to have a solid wall around the entire police station. That would be one of the incentives that we would talk to the design builders about. And you can see the parking flanks completely around in a U shape. The Sally Port is over on the right, that has sliding gates that, once, once a vehicle gets inside the Sally Port, the gate closes, and it's complete security. And that goes directly into the holding cell area. There's a, there's a communications tower at the very south side of the property, along with the Leitgopian Emergency Generator for the, the station as well. So it's a very simple site plan. I think the circulation is good. Fire, fire department likes it because you can drive completely around the facility. And, and that makes it better for finding any potential fires that may arise. Next slide. Floor plan. This is, it's basically upside down, but so you've got, you've got a, the, the, the north is to the left side of the slide. So you'll see, over towards the left, you can see a double front door that goes into the lobby. And then the main idea is there's, there's corridors down each side of what we'll call the core. And in the core is, you know, records, case management, some restrooms, mailboxes. The executive suites are in the middle, and then to the right of those are the locker rooms and restrooms, along with some sleeping rooms. On the top, we have dispatch on the left. We have the holding cells. And then on the right of the holding cells, we have detective area and, you know, gang enforcement and conference room. And then on the south side of the main core, on the very left side, we have an EOC training room, to be more of a public use facility that has adjacent kitchen to it. And as you move along, what is actually the, the west side of the building, we have the IT department, we have traffic, we have the briefing room, we have gun clean room, we have the armory, we have an exit corridor, we're calling it the go-back corridor, where people can grab their go-bags and get directly out to their cars. And then to the right of that, we have evidence, evidence storage. And then finally, down at the very bottom right corner, we have a physical training area, along with a, a staff break area. Physical training area has an enclosed area for outdoor activity as well as indoor activity. And they have big roll-up doors that make, makes it kind of an indoor-outdoor environment. Back to dispatch, they also have a private patio and fenced wall area for security, because that's, you know, man twenty-four seven. And so they have their own break room, their own restroom, along with their own outside area for, for breaks. That's kind of the floor plan in a nutshell. And as I said, this, this represents about twenty-six thousand four hundred square feet, I believe. And then with the annex, evidence annex outside on the south property area, we're right about the twenty-eight thousand five hundred square feet or so that was required in the space program. And so that, that's pretty much the floor plan.
One thing I would like to add is that way this was projected is, put together is by a program. So first, we met with the police department, getting an understanding of each one of the divisions, understanding how many people are going to be in the, in those particular areas, understanding the square footage that we would need to come up with, allocating space for each one of those, and identifying what their needs were for each division. So that's how we kind of broke that out. What I want to caution you about is this is a design-build project. So this is criteria. This is just bridging documents. So we will have, and I'll talk about this in a couple of minutes, the design-build entity phase, which we are gonna be bringing on a contractor slash architect combination team that will finish up these documents. So this may not be the ultimate end result. There may be some shifting or changing around. This is the idea of what the city wants to go for. So we wanted to make sure we had everything included of what they, the needs were for this. You know, right as, as acting chief Jason Hayden said, you know, right now, they're in a police station, and they're in the annex building. Well, now we're able to bring in both of those into one building. And not only that, but the community. We have a lot of community space in here with pals and with train, with conference rooms. So we can have space for, for community and volunteers, as well as parking. So we have gates around the site where we can close off certain areas if we needed additional parking for a public event. But we can keep all of the other official cars back behind a lock gate. We have that ability with the way this layout is.
Can I interject here for a moment?
Sure, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I, the plan that you see here, like Scott mentioned, is not the final version of what will be constructed on-site. There's gonna be a few adoptions, I think, that will be made. The largest one is the jail. Right now, that is a placeholder. Well, some of the other locations throughout the PD could very well change when we get into the next phase of this. Really can't see it very well. My apologies for that. I'll have the chief head and send you all a electronic version of the site plan, because we're really excited about it. Just keep in mind that it's a draft at this point and subject to some change. Even the front elevations could, could change during the process, but I'm really excited about it. Appreciate everyone's comments. Scott, I'll turn it back over to you. My apologies.
No, that's, that's perfect. Thank you. Yeah, we can get, move on to the next slide. Okay, so the budget. So part of our job as well is, is making sure that we, we get the biggest bang for the buck at your total all-in price of twenty-four million dollars. So what that means is you have to break out the hard costs, which is the construction, the construction materials, anything that's going to be inside the building, that's, that's fastened down to the building, as well as soft costs. So those soft costs are, you know, your, your project management, your architecture fees, your utility fees, your fixtures, furnishings, and equipment that are not fixed to the facility, all of your land costs, your geotechnical costs. So there, there's a lot of soft costs that's added to that. So right now, as you can see, we have a total estimate project cost of twenty-four million dollars. That's our, that's our total budget, all-in price. When we go out to the design-build entities here in a couple of weeks, we're gonna be procuring that method. We're gonna be, all-in price is eighteen million five hundred thousand for them. We have four point three million, which are what I just mentioned, the soft costs, the things that aren't locked in or in the building itself, fastened down in the building itself. So within that four point three, we also have the FFNE, which is your fixtures, your furniture, your equipment, that's your copiers, that's all of your desks, your credenzas, your chairs. And so as of right now, we just did an update on our estimate. COVID, you know, really did some strange things with the bidding world in, in construction. We saw a, a large decline in bidding prices through two thousand and twenty, which was fantastic. And now I think we're, we're, as we're coming out of, of the COVID, the bidding environment is changing, and we're seeing steel prices and wood prices and labor prices going up. So we wanted to do a validation right now, before we went out with the design-build entity, to make sure that we're on par. And as Russ mentioned earlier, we are, we're still tracking right on, on par. So we are on budget. We have identified, and we are continuing to identify items, in case we are not, that we can modify to make sure that we are staying within budget. So we are already, you know, we, we, we plan for the worst and, and expect the best. And so that's what we're, that's what we're doing right now. And so far, everything's been going great. Next slide, please. So this was how it's allocated. I'm not sure if, if anyone from the city wants to talk about this slide, other than this is how, how the financing was allocated through the city.
I'll take this slide. This is just an example of where the funding sources are for the construction of the project. I have to forgive me my... Okay, so Measure P is funding approximately three point five, police capital improvement, two point five million. Measure H, we're contributing a million dollars from there. We currently have a sign from the general fund, approximately nine hundred thousand, that was previously assigned by council. We've asked for an additional two point one million dollars from the general fund, which I believe has already been committed as well. And we're financing with I Bank through the application we intend on submitting, approximately fourteen million dollars. Annual payment is gonna be approximately seven hundred thousand dollars a year. And the good part of that is that a vast majority of the funding will come specifically from our Measure V fund. And the comment about Measure P is we've had that since approximately two thousand and four, and we have been setting money aside since that time for specifically this project. I think this is a really good example of where that Measure P dollar is being put to the use that it was specifically set out for, and that we intend on spending the money exactly how Measure P designed it to be spent. So our total cost is approximately, like Scott said, twenty-four million dollars. We're really proud and thankful for the council's support in this project. As you all know, it's, it's long overdue for the police department and its staff. It's gonna be a great motivator for our staff. I'll be sure to get you a copy of the draft plan that we are circulating at this moment. I think you'll be excited with it as well. We're doing a really good job, working with the Banner and the Taylor Group, putting this project together. Next slide, please.
Technical difficulties. Okay.
Scott, I'll turn it back over.
All right. Sounds great. Thank you. So the next step, so as I mentioned earlier, this is what's considered a design-build delivery method, which means we are not building out or designing the, the entire building and then putting it out for construction. This is a different format to where... This is a different format to where it's a two phase process. Phase one is we're going to be issuing out at the end of April here, the request for qualifications. What that's going to do is we're going to get design build entities. Again, the entities are a contractor and an architect that's going to team up together to to form the entity. We're going to, we have an established criteria that they must meet qualifications based on public code. And the city is going to identify the three most qualified design build entities. From there, the three most qualified design build entities will move into the request for proposal phase. So that's phase two of the process. From those, we are going to have, they're going to be providing us their proposals and we're going to be interviewing them. We're going to have a couple of interviews with them. And we're going to identify which is the most qualified firm that the city would like to work with. So once we identify that, we plan on awarding the design build entity the a contract in October. And then in November, the design build entity will start the design phase. What's unique about the design build process is that you do not need to complete the entire site work, building and everything. Prior to starting construction. So they can begin their site work, design work and have it completed before they're done with their building design work. Which means we can get shovels in the ground and we can start earlier. We can get the foundation going. And move the the construction schedule up. And that's that's our goal is, you know, quality and time and make sure that we get this done right. So right now we have May twenty 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 two as we're shooting for our groundbreaking, the construction. And a groundbreaking or excuse me, the grand opening is going to be October of twenty twenty three. And and that's about the conclusion of our presentation and we'll like to open it up for questions.
Thank you very much. We'll go to council for questions. Mr. Jones.
Yeah, this is more for finance. Measure P funds will be used for financing this on an annual basis. Does that leave us available for funding any other projects in the future that we may have to bond up for?
So actually, at this point in time, no, because even though we're making the payment with the measure P funds, the the measure P. Fund itself does not qualify for the loan. There's not enough revenues, et cetera, coming in to qualify for the loan. So that fourteen million dollar loan that we're getting from I bank is because of the general fund. And then basically I the measure P will reimburse the general fund that seven hundred thousand dollar payment.
Okay, so if we needed to put a fire station in, say, five years from now or seven years from now, it'd be very challenging.
It wouldn't be as it wouldn't be as challenging as it would be today because obviously we've paid down some of the loans. So we'd we'd take a look back at where we are with our revenue services. Do we have any additional debt that we have? And there's other factors that come into play. So looking at it from today's perspective, it would be very difficult. Looking at it at seven to ten years down the road, not necessarily as difficult.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Lambert, questions? Comments?
Uh, no questions at this time here.
Thank you very much. Mayor Portim Lewis?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Mr. Mr. Yamas?
No questions. Thank you for the presentations.
Thank you. I'm very pleased to see this happening. I will say that if if we have to remove the palm trees to get us under budget, it won't break my heart. They tend to attract crows and bats and not much else. So I want to thank you very much. City manager and and chief and acting chief, thank you for helping us guide. Ms. Williams continuing to keep a good handle on our finances, but for the excellent handling of the finances. By the staff and the council in this town, this could not be taking place. And this it is, you are correct, it is way overdue. And I'm very pleased to be part of making it happen. So thank you again for the presentation. Thank you, staff and council for helping bring this beautiful project to fruition. Oh, I did have one question. And I noticed here I had besides the palm trees. Are we going to have, is there going to be a corridor for defendants between the police station and the courthouse?
Good question. We are preparing for access for our staff between the courthouse and the new police facility. The only thing that prevents it or the only thing that makes me answer that question is a no is that the new courthouse actually has its own jail facility built into it. So the county no longer uses the police department as a temporary holding facility for inmates that are going to court. They actually go to. Superior Court and they're they're transitioned in and out of the Superior Court inside their facility. Interesting note, when the Superior Court was looking to construct that facility, we tried and tried to reach some type of mutual. MOU where we didn't have to build a jail facility right next door to them. We were just unsuccessful with negotiating with the state of California to maybe co use that jail facility that's inside the court. Now, it's not quite as large as ours, but it would have been very helpful in construction of ours to co use that facility, but we just weren't successful at the time. So the answer to the question is there will be a path. It just won't be used for inmates or prisoners for staff.
I think that may have had something to do with the fact that courthouse was, it's not the only design. It's not the only courthouse of that design. I think if you look at other courthouses built in that same project era, they're all similar designs. So they save money on that. And that may very well be the reason that they couldn't expand that jail facility to accommodate. But I was, I was very pleased to be involved in in the bringing that, helping bring that courthouse to town. And that was, that was quite a project too. So bringing the police station next to it is is, I think, very, very exciting. And well overdue. So thank you again, everyone. Thank you to our guests this evening for your excellent work. Looking forward, working forward, working with you more in the future as we go.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You bet. Now we will move on to item twelve. And this is an action item, consideration of approval of city council resolution number six, three, four, five. Authorizing the mayor of Los Bannas to enter into a memorandum of in understanding for the Merced County Operational Area Hazardous Materials Response Team. And so for that, we'll go to Fire Chief Hurley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Good evening. This item may not might not be as exciting as a as a new fire station, but I am, I are a new, I'm sorry, new police station.
Oh, we know what you're thinking.
We gotta try, right? We gotta put it out there. But it is a, it is is an important item to myself, the staff and the and our entire region. Something that I'm excited about. And I what it is, is it's a it's a memorandum of understanding. For the city of Los Bannas to join the other agencies within the county. To be part of their hazardous, Merced County Operational Area Hazardous Material Response Team. And like I said, this is something that we've been talking about for many years. All the agencies, fire agencies in the county work really well together. And the bottom line is when we work together and train together, we we learn more and obviously provide a better service for for everybody. So next slide, please. This is just a quick picture before we get into the presentation. This is a, this is actually the unit that is in Atwater, the Merced County Fire Department's hazmat unit. It is a fully enclosed, basically command center and resource tool, basically toolbox. Of a lot of good equipment and high technology products and all the team members to utilize to 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 mitigate hazardous materials incidents. Next slide. So in the MOU, I I wanted to just really just kind of go over the some of the meat and potatoes of the MOU. To just explain why we're doing it and some of the key points that are tied to it. So as I stated, fire agencies within Merced County Operational Area have acknowledged that there is a need. For county wide local response capacity to hazardous materials incidents within the unincorporated and incorporated area. The need for a type one hazardous materials response team available to to respond to mutual aid requests statewide. Not only just to our county, our neighboring counties and and even beyond as our statewide mutual aid system allows us to. And I put in here a type one team. Everything, everything is typed in within emergency response and and there's, you have to have so these types of skills and this type of equipment to be typed. And a type one team is one that is trained and equipped to respond to unknown chemical releases. As well as incidents involving the CBRME weapons. And and I put in there, because everything's acronyms, is chemical, biological, radiological. Nuclear and explosive materials. So it's a, it's a, it's a well team, well trained, well equipped team to mitigate and address. Anything that might be rolling through town and dumped on our streets, basically. And we realize that it's the most effective and cost effective method to provide such services in collaboration with multi agencies responding. This allows us to utilize resources from all our agencies to to better build a stronger team. Cross training and and be able to mitigate incidents at all times, all times of the year. And make sure that we have a proper response team that available to respond. Next slide. So in the MOU, it identifies some some I some pretty important things. We'll start it off with that the team will provide technical services at the scene of a hazmat incident within the boundaries of Merced County. That's the ultimate goal. It's for our county and and our and our municipalities. The parties involved in this MOU, Merced County Fire Department, which is contracted and staff with Cal Fire. Merced City Fire Department, Atwater Fire Department, and and hopefully soon, very soon, the Los Bannas Fire Department. Each party shall designate a number of trained individuals to serve on the team on an ongoing basis and are subject to available personnel. It's completely understood about regarding to availability to fully staff or, you know, and we can provide what we can provide. And the the staff that is trained to a certain level. Next slide. So each party of this MOU is going to be responsible to ensure that individuals designated to fulfill the commitment of the team. Are trained to the appropriate level pursuant to state federal statutes and regulations handling special specialty, specialty chemical or hazardous materials. So some of those statutes is the California specialized training and California State Fire Marshals that we that all are trained and falls fall under. As a hazardous material technician, we're trained in weapons of mass destruction, trained as an assistant safety officer. Maintain competency by completing the annual refresher training identified in the MOU and as attachment A is a response task book. Available for response within Merced County Operational Area and also be available for mutual aid requests for type one and type two teams. Next slide. Again, each party agrees to provide the training to their selected personnel, much of the training that I just mentioned. Most importantly, the hazardous materials, first responder as. And also as a technician specialist through the county task book that we do annually training. Merced County Fire Department, with approval from the Merced County Board of Supervisors, has committed to be the lead agency on this team. They currently, they currently have the hazmat team and the equipment in the county. So they've they've agreed that they committed to to take the lead and kind of run the program. The team program coordinator is the Merced County Fire Department Battalion sixteen. He's a battalion chief. And then the team program captain is the is the Merced County Fire Department hazardous materials captain currently has a position in that. In that role at this point, who will manage the daily operations and training for the program. Each participant agency agrees and to designate a representative from the agency to establish and maintain the operational procedures. For the operations of the team and and will assist in the program coordinator with establishing the hazardous materials training schedule. So this will allow everybody on the team to train to the to the needed requirements and be on the same page. Next slide. Dispatch procedures, as as we do now, if there's an incident in a community, say, Los Bannas. We will arrive on scene and we would be, we would be taking incident command. And at that point, we would be ordering resources. And at this point, we would be, we would order be ordering the Merced County Operational Area Hazardous Hazardous Materials Team. So all mutual aid and and instance support the request will be handled through the dispatch center of the incident commander. Following the guidelines set forth at the county area plan. Next slide. Each party of this MOU shall defend, hold harmless and identify each of the other parties of the MOU. And selected officials, partners, officers and employees against all claims, litigation, liability, costs, expenses. Including responsible attorney fee, reasonable attorney fees damages, but but only in proportion to and to the extent such such claim. Litigation, liability, costs, expenses and damages are caused by or result from any negligent act or omission or willfully misconduct of the party. So identification, very important part of the MOU. Next slide. Insurances, each participant agency agrees to maintain workers' compensation and liability insurance coverage. For its wrongful acts, errors and or omissions arising from the performance of its duties under this agreement. Next slide. Cost recover, it's important aspect, agencies may pursue all legally recoverable costs associated with response to hazardous material incidents. From those persons and or entities responsible for the incident. Not all hazardous material incidents are. To the point where cost recovery would be would go up, but if you if you respond to any, an industry aside or or a. Wrongful act, the cost recovery can be be recovered. The recovery effort will be the responsibility of the jurisdiction with legal responsibility to mitigate the hazardous material incidents. Each agency shall provide a record of all costs of resources, including but not limited to personnel and equipment deployed to the to the incident. To the agency responsible for handling the recovery, cost recovery. The team may assist in, the team may assist in the responsibility to mitigate hazardous materials incidents. But the sole responsibility will follow, will fall on the the agency having jurisdiction. And that that would happen now if we were to have an incident and the cost recovery was to be issued, we would, we would work as the incident. Command and the agency having jurisdiction and working with getting cost recovered from a mutual aid request as well at this point. Next slide. So term of the MOU shall be effective as the latest date started with the party signature and shall remain in effect unless terminated as provided within the MOU. Participants in this MOU may be terminated without cause by any party upon given at least thirty days written notice of termination to all other agencies. In the event that Merced County Fire Department terminates its participation in MOU, the remaining members. Shall by amendment to this MOU designate an agency to act as the lead agency. Okay, next slide. A little bit about new membership, additional member agencies may join the team and become part a party to the MOU if approved inevitably by the executive of each member agency. New membership shall require an amendment signed by the executive of each member agency party to the MOU. Next. If a party of the MOU withdraw a party to this MOU or subsequently added team member agency may withdraw from the team. And terminate its obligation under this MOU upon given written notice to the executive officers of each team agency, not less thirty days prior to the the date of withdrawal. Subsequently, to issuing a written notice to. Subsequently, to issuing a written notice of intent to withdraw, the departing team member agency shall remain a member agency with the accompanying rights, privileges, and responsibilities until the official date of withdrawal. The next slide. So before I move here, I do want to say thank you for this opportunity to provide this to you. Again, I am excited about it. It's something that we have talked about as a county for many, many years. It's something that, it's because of our interoperability and our partnerships with our neighboring jurisdictions and the fact that we know that working together makes us all better is why we're bringing this forward today. So staff recommends that the city council adopt the resolution authorizing the mayor of the Los Bannas to sign the memorandum of understanding for the Merced County Operational Area Hazardous Materials Response Team. With that, that's the end of my presentation, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Chief. We'll go to counsel. Mr. Jones, questions?
No questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert.
No questions here, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
I just have one question. You described type one and type two teams. Could you explain a little bit what that means?
Yes, a type one team is trained and equipped to respond to multitude of different types of hazardous materials, chemical releases, as well as incidents involving that acronym, the chemical, biological, they're trained at that, at a higher level. A type two team is one that is expected to respond and be able to identify and mitigate a chemical release. It even goes to a type three where it's almost to the point of identifying and having and been able to bring the resources in to mitigate. You actually will have people come in to actually identify and help set the scene up type of thing, almost like first responders. Does that answer your question?
Yes, so Los Bannas, once you enter into this memorandum of understanding, do we fall under a particular type?
We will, the team regionally will form and meet the qualifications. The goal is to get the team up to the certain qualifications, training, and ability and have the resources to get to that type one level. Currently, I believe the Merced County team is a type one team, and we don't, we're not involved with them, we're not involved with their trains, we haven't incident, if we had an incident today here in Los Bannas, we would be requesting their assistance to mitigate at that level. This allows us to have more personnel involved with that, improves our availability and professional, or ability to mitigate an incident as those other responders respond. And honestly, it really gives us a specialty, gives us personnel that have a specialty to recognize certain things that deal with hazardous materials, so we can start mitigating those issues as the team is formed and arrives. I would say it's a lot like, you know, an officer that's trained in, trained in bombing, bomb squad type of thing, SWAT, they have that extra specialty and they are able to help mitigate and plan for the extended event.
Okay, so for the teams that are at, whether it's type one or type two, is there a difference in their salary, any kind of compensation for them getting that type?
No, they're just, they're allowed, if statewide mutual aid plan requested a team, hazmat team, because of the incident, they're going to request a type one team that has the capabilities, resources, personnel to meet that criteria. I use another example of a fire engine, a type one fire engine when requested to a wild wildfire has a complement of hose and water and personnel, it has a limit, at least four people on it. So a type one team, by building the team together regionally, we can form that, those qualifications and standards that fall under that category through FireScope, which is our, what we, we operate everything off through FireScope regarding typing resources, whether it be a bulldozer, or a fire engine, or a rescue.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Yamas, questions?
Mr. Mayor, no questions, thank you.
Thank you. I want to take just a little further there. Now, Ms. Lewis mentioned about extra pay. I know we have a thing called hazard pay. When our, when our people are involved in this team, or when they're on, being trained, or when they're involved in going out to an event, an incident, are they paid extra besides just like regular overtime, or is there a special pay for the skills and this danger that they're incurring?
At this point, they're just incur the overtime costs, also the overtime costs regarding the training that's required. There are departments, and we haven't got to that point, and we don't, at this point, I have a couple of people that are interested in becoming qualified at that level. That may come to an issue that we need to address in regards to do an additional salary for those personnel to take on that specialty, and I would be definitely willing to look into that so we have some incentive and it basically brings that expertise into our department and into our firehouse and into our community.
Yes, I think that's wise.
I'm not gonna, I can't, I can't say that that's where it's going to be, but at this point, it's, it's the time, the time spent and the resource. We send people to incidents outside or, and come in and pay overtime for their time that they're not on duty.
Well, I would, it seems to be that would be a working condition and a negotiable item, I would imagine, correct, Ms. Mellon?
Yes, that's exactly what I was gonna pipe in and say. That would be a meet and confer item.
Yes, and that's why I really didn't have an answer, and I appreciate Lucy jumping on, that's, it's, at this point, it's, it's part of the job, and that may be an issue we address in the future.
Okay, very good. We want to make sure when people take on something extra dangerous, that they are rewarded for that risk. But that is a meet and confer, that is a labor issue, so we'll leave it at that. And now, aside from the extra time we're going to pay our employees, our fire staff, is there any extra cost to the city besides that staffing cost?
Not at this point, being that the county already has the teams set up and the equipment, and a lot of trainings and equipment is purchased through grants and resources they already have, at this point, there is no extra discussion regarding, you know, there may be some extra, you know, PPE that they need to have within their bags, bag that we'll assess as we move through the process of it. But that has not been part of the discussion to what is actually needed, other than putting them, trained personnel on the team to go to work.
Okay, very good, thank you. Well, seems all our questions have been answered. The chair will entertain a motion for item twelve.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number Six Three Four Five as read by title.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, Councilman Jones, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. So I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lewis and a second by Councilmember Jones to approve City Council Resolution Number Six Three Four Five as read by title. Roll call, Ms. Melanie?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Faria?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you, Senator, appreciation to staff, those who are willing to take on that extra responsibility and risk.
Thank you, thanks for this talk.
You bet. Moving to item thirteen, consideration of approval of City Council Resolution Number Six Three Four Six, expressing support for actions to further strengthen local democracy, authority, and control as related to local zoning and housing issues. And we will go to acting city manager, Breezy.
Mr. Mayor, tonight, staff has prepared for your consideration a resolution in support of actions for further strengthening local control, democracy, and authority as it relates to local housing, zoning, and land use issues. This item was originally brought up by Councilmember Lewis as a councilmember request, so I would like to offer her the floor if she has any comments at this time, councilmember. Otherwise, if you approve it, we will be sending the signed resolution off to the California Cities for Local Control Coalition, which is comprised of an ever-growing group of California cities that are spearheading this local control initiative throughout the state of California. Councilmember, I'll turn it over to you if you'd like an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Acting City Manager, and first of all, I want to thank the city council for supporting this measure. As we experienced earlier this evening with the accessory dwelling unit, we can see that more and more cities are losing their ability to be self-autonomous, and our authorities are being usurped away from us. And under the state constitution, cities and local municipalities do have the right to govern how they see fit for land use, for land use in their communities, and what's best for their communities. And as we can see it right now, it's kind of slowly being eroded away. So we had one local council member in Southern California who started a grassroots movement. We weren't getting support from the League of Cities on this, they've just kind of been dragging their feet on this, and it's become a really important issue if we want to maintain the right to make decisions about how we want to grow our city and how we want to use our land and fees that are determined to do these processes. So with that, I, again, I just want to thank the council for support of this and that we, with a vote tonight, will be able to get this resolution off and join the rest of the cities as the growth is happening, as our acting city manager is saying, cities are coming on board very quickly to join on this process, to let our state legislators know that we want to have local control at our city levels from councils as to how we want to see our cities grow and how we want to manage the growth in our cities and how we want our cities to look for the future. So that's pretty much what I have to say, and I'll open it to any other council member if they have comments.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Mr. Jones?
No comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
No commentary here, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Guys strongly support this resolution, as we saw, we're losing a lot of local control. That means that residents are losing their voice in their local government.
Thank you very much. Well, I do support it, and I think item eight A is a classic example. So, Ms. Lewis, if you'd like to make the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number Six Three Four Six as read by title.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, Councilman Jones.
Mr. Jones was first.
I'll second that, please.
All right. I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lewis and a second by Councilmember Jones to approve City Council Resolution Number Six Three Four Six as read by title. Roll call, Ms. Melanie?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Faria?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much. And I will, in my experiences representing the city as mayor, I will tell you that the state legislatures, state legislators and federal legislators, they listen to, they listen to the people when they make these kinds of statements. One of the big challenges we have is that the valley is outnumbered population-wise, but I think if we continue to make noise this way, we'll eventually be heard and maybe chip away at that tendency for the state to tell us what to do. So we appreciate it very much. Let's move to item fourteen, and that is the consideration of selection of an executive search firm to assist the city council in recruitment of a new city manager, and we'll go to city attorney Vaughn.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I drew the short straw on this one tonight. You'll notice there are three names on the agenda staff report, but mine appears on the top, so I'll be presenting tonight. Based on your direction on March twenty-second, city staff and thanks to Lucy Melanie prepared a request for proposals for a executive recruiting firm specifically to help the city council in terms of recruiting and selection of a new city manager. I think the RFP is in your packet, we don't need to go through that, but as a response to that RFP, well, actually, it was sent out to ten firms that are known to the city as well as posted in the newspaper and various other places, so it got a wide bit of advertising in a short period of time. We got back seven proposals. All those proposals are set forth in your packet. I think you'll note that probably all of them are very professionally prepared, they are somewhat canned, this is a highly competitive world, executive recruiting, and it's like very competitive in terms of the city manager recruitment, and all of these firms are very much involved in that. So I think you can tell by the level of proposals that were attached to your packet that this is not the first time that each one of the proposers has been through this. So we've tried to prepare, well, what we're asking for tonight, actually, we'll jump to that, is that either you discuss all of the proposals amongst yourselves here in open session with a thought of drilling down and possibly setting up interviews with the proposers that you view as the top proposers, and that could be one through seven of them. The staff did not want to presuppose what the city council wanted to do in terms of interviews. I don't think that the paper proposals gives you the full story and gives you the sense of the recruiters, unlike an interview that we can, a process that we can go through so that you can get a personal feel for the style of the recruiters and the style of the firm that you want to select to help you through this process. I guess, and when we were talking about putting the staff report together, one of the other alternatives to you is just simply to select one tonight without interviews. Again, staff was kind of, just wanted to give you a full gamut of what your, what your alternatives might be, and so that's what we came up with, interviewing or selection. I think staff is kind of leaning towards setting up some type of interview process, not necessarily all seven that proposed, but maybe those that pique your interest, that you'd like some confirmation that you're making the right choice so that you're not kind of picking blind just based on a paper proposal. So what we've tried to do tonight is we tried to come up with a couple of slides that kind of show you all of the proposers together, so you can maybe discern some differences between them. I think you were also provided with a prepared sheet with all seven of them on there, and so I couldn't fit that, or Sarah couldn't fit that on the slide, so I thought we would just kind of go through these three slides to refresh your recollection. A lot of reading, if you read those cover to cover, took myself like a couple of hours to go through them and got kind of blurry-eyed reading the same stuff over and over. I'm presenting these to you in alphabetical order, so don't read anything into the order in which they're presented. So don't read anything into the order in which they're presented to you. So the first one's Alliance. So they're a local, well, not local, but they're a California firm out of La Palma, which I believe is Southern California. Their cost is a $30,000 fixed cost, which is in the ballpark of most of them. And then they indicated that their, kind of their specialty might be putting together stakeholders' meetings if you wanted to go out farther than the city council in terms of the decision-making and get some input from the community or stakeholders. And if you wanted to do that, there was an optional $2,000 charge for that. They would anticipate going through all of their pre-interview work, which is preparing, meeting with you, determining whether or not, who it is, what's the kind of candidate that you're looking for, who it is that you're looking for, profile that person, putting together the brochures and then going through whatever outreach process they're going to go to, which I don't think it's mainly advertising. I think it's actually mainly going through their databases of folks that have come through their firm in the past and just through all of their contacts. And I think that's universal through all of the executive recruiters. It's not just throw an ad up in the, in the city, League of Cities magazine and see who calls. They actually go out and they search and solicit candidates to submit resumes. We didn't have enough room on the slides. So we just kind of took maybe the most relevant recent recruitment examples for city manager for each within the last two years. So this may not, there may be more recruitments for each of the, each of the companies. But Sarah and I just kind of pulled out the ones that we thought were, might pique your interest as to who they have been recruiting in terms of city manager in the last two years. And that example of Alliance, the closest ones being Stockton and Clovis. And then we go to Bob Murray. They're a long-time firm, been around for a long time. See their name all the time. They're out of Roseville. Once again, they quote a fee of not to exceed $24,500. And they broke it down based on their fee of 18.5 plus reimbursable expenses of 6,000, which include, you know, putting together a brochure, website, those kinds of hard costs. They anticipated a 16-week process, starting with, you know, essentially the initial meetings with the city council. And then there's kind of a representative group on the far right-hand side of their most recent recruitments. Madera and Tracy being the two that are closest to Los Banos in terms of geography. Lompoc may be the most representative in terms of, and Madera, actually, in terms of demographics comparable to the city of Los Banos. Next slide. So then we have CPS HR Consulting. They're out of Sacramento, again, another Northern California firm. Again, in the ballpark with a not to exceed 25,000. They break it down a little bit differently. And they have an optional recruitment video if you want to pay for that. They indicated 16 weeks from the date of the initial meetings. Again, all kind of representative of the same. I don't know if they decide to go through an interview process, whether that period of time can be compressed. That might be a question that would be of interest to you as a group in terms of getting this process done in a quicker period of time. When you think about it, those 16 weeks is four months. That's really in the world of recruiting and what they have to do to reach out to candidates that meet your profile. That's not a long time in the executive recruiting world. I believe the last recruitment that the city did was about 16 weeks to six months, I believe. And I think the one before that was actually, took a year. So it just depends on who's out there, depends on the recruiter, depends on who's looking for work, and depends on what you're, what kind of person you're looking for would impact the amount of time it takes to get to the selection. Again, on the far right, is there representative recruitments in the last two years? Modesto's an interesting one. I think Union City and Marysville are very similar too, Los Banos in terms of population and demographics. Gomez Partners, they're out of Illinois. They're kind of an outlier in terms of comparing the recruiters that proposed and that their, their cost is based on 25% of hired candidates' first annual base salary, which we just guesstimated based on what a salary for a city manager has commanded in Los Banos the last few years. And we just kind of came up with that range to give you an idea of what that might cost you. Again, they're nine to 10 weeks in terms of getting it together. And they really didn't have any California local agencies that they've worked for, cities that they've worked for that you could kind of compare. And actually, we could potentially do a reach out to see how those cities viewed the recruitment process with each of those recruiters. And it's like Housing Authority of Palm Beach. I don't think we're talking about apples to apples here in terms of what you might be looking for. But who knows? They might, they could be the best. Next slide. And these are the final three. Coffin Associates out of Berkeley, again, we're in that $25,000 range. Theirs is a not to exceed and includes all their reimbursable expenses. They're a little bit farther out there at 16 weeks, but not that much far, not that farther. If they stood out to you either on paper or through the interview process, I'm not sure I would let the length of time be the ultimate factor and that there are a lot of variables as to what, you know, what could cause it to go 16 weeks, including scheduling interviews. Although I think it might be easier now in the COVID area, era in terms of interviews, they could all be done virtually as opposed to in the past where my experience has been, we've all sat around a table in a conference room and called in the applicants from wherever they live. And that creates quite of a scheduling issue. So they've, their last few recruitments are Paradise, Salinas. And I found the Town of Paradise one kind of interesting in that Paradise is the site of that big fire we had a few years ago. And so it's interesting, what a challenge for that city manager. The next one is Strategic Government Resources out of Keller, Texas. Again, in that $25,000 range, again, in that 15-week range. But again, there, it looks like a lot of their business is outside of California. Again, it doesn't mean that they're not a fit for you, but I would just be, I would just be wondering if I was making this election, whether a firm that's dealing with these out-of-state placements and in fact is from out-of-state would be the right fit for you. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't just discard them based on that alone. And then the final one is WP CP out of Morgan Hill. Very local to Los Banos. Again, the fee, representative of what the others are, a $23,000 to $24,000 range. They kind of couch their task calendar a little bit different in that when they say negotiations to be in after week 12, they're talking about actually negotiating with your selected candidate and that they would help with the negotiations of that agreement and help with the negotiations and the compensation. So as you can see, they're all, except for the ones outside of California, all the ones inside California are pretty similar in terms of when you kind of boil down the basics of their proposals. And so staff is, staff is recommending that you probably, the safest way to go, so you don't end up with a recruiter that you say, oh, my gosh, why did we pick these guys? Probably would be a good thing to have some type of in-person virtual interview so you can get a sense of who it is that's going to be handling your account and whether that's a person that you're going to want to entrust this endeavor with and when you feel you have a comfort level and they're professional and so on and so forth. So that's essentially the presentation. I don't have a good way to boil it down for you. I guess you could interview none of them. I guess you could interview all of the California ones. I guess you could interview all seven of them. If you go around the table tonight and there's clear favorites, you could pare it down to maybe two interviews. My sense of it is if you're going to go to the energy of interviewing two, adding one or two more isn't that big of a deal. And on paper, you might, you might be discarding the one that you really want. So in the past, staff has made recommendations. We kind of did do a ranking, but we're not, unless you want us to share that, we really think it's your person that you, as a group, need to feel comfortable with. And it's not necessarily staff's choice. And frankly, staff hasn't interviewed any of these folks either. So anyway, I'll open it up to questions. 16 weeks, if you were to do interviews, if you were to schedule interviews, probably at a special meeting in the next week or 10 days, you're probably talking about having one of these recruiting firms onboard the beginning of May. And then I'll do my simple math, May, June, July, August. You could have a selection by the end of the summer.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I'll go through the council and see if we get some ideas.
I would note that none of the ones that we've used in the past sent in a proposal. I was anticipating that might be a question of the council, but none of the ones that we used.
We've used Bob Murray.
We've used Bob Murray. But not for a city manager.
Long time.
But not for a city manager. Yeah, a long, yeah, a long time ago. Let's go through the council and see what council's thinking. Mr. Jones?
You know, I think we are definitely going to have to interview some of these companies here. I have a couple preferred picks. But I don't know how you guys want to do this because this could take quite some time going through and listening to everybody's pick. Should we just email in what we're thinking or?
Well, if you, I mean, if you, if you have preferred ones and they're all overlapping, it may, it may be the same three that we're hearing over and over. So I, you know, I think the interview process would take a half hour. So if, you know, if you were going to interview all seven, you'd be committing, you know, three and a half hours. If you pare it down to three, you're, you know, you're committing, you're committing an hour and a half. I think, I mean, I, I think if you have clear preferences tonight, we get them out, you can hash out which ones you want to invite for an interview.
Okay, so the first one I would say is WB CP out of Morgan Hill. Second would be Bob Murray and Associates. And the third being CPS HR Consulting.
Okay. Very good. You bet. Mr. Lambert?
That is actually the same three that, the one out of Morgan Hill was one of my, the top one. But the same three.
The same three.
Okay, well, my number one choice was Bob Murray. And I did read through all of these and I did list my analysis, which I don't need to go over since Bill has done some. The one thing I noticed about Bob Murray's company over all the others is that he listed some references in the back that we can contact and interview. And I did just that. I spoke to a city council member from his references, who had recently, they had gone through the interviewing process during COVID and felt that it was very successful in their hiring. His packet was really simple and easy to understand and it kept me engaged. So that's my number one pick. I, I would, I noticed that CPS had just about as many California interviews as they did with other states. So it was about, based on what they provided to us, they had 17 placements for California and 12 for other states. But their packet just didn't keep my attention. So I found it difficult to follow. I hope that's not a mark of how they are, but their packet just didn't keep my attention. And Alliance is the other one that I looked at. They said they had about 550 placements since they started up in 2004. Clovis is probably one of the closest cities that they did a placement. And Carlsbad, which is in Southern California, they had some assistant city managers out of San Jose and then a place in Hawaii. So I guess if I had to, my number one pick would be Bob Murray. Number two is Alliance. And if there has to be a third one, it would be CPS. But number one and two are, number one is Bob Murray and Alliance is number two.
Thank you very much. Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Number one would be WB CP, two Alliance, and three Murray.
Well, I'm looking at, everybody likes Murray. And we've got WB CP. We have three out of the four who like WB CP. And then we have three out of the four who like CPS.
And there, the way, the way I'm recording it here, it looks like only four of the seven have been mentioned. That would be a pretty manageable group to interview and give you a, give you a flavor for all four. Unless you have an additional one that wasn't named in any of the previous councilperson. So what I have is WP CP, Bob Murray, CPS HR, and Alliance as the four that everybody, one or another chose. And that's a manageable number to interview, I would say. Well, you have to do the interviews. So if you want to cut it down further than that.
If you, if we can, if we want to do four, four interviews, I think that's a manageable number, like half an hour each. You get a pretty good feel of someone. I have no problem with that whatsoever. I do, I just have to mention one little thing here that I almost found a little bit humorous. And that's Gomez Partners, which no one chose. They're obviously motivated to get the highest salary from their, from their candidates because they get 25% of the first-year's base compensation. And so I found that, I don't know, I took a little humor on that. Ms. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, I know a half hour's been mentioned, but this is really an important.
but this is really an important uh interview for this council uh to be able to get it right. So if if it goes over, you know, maybe in the forty-five minutes or or an hour, we need to feel free to have freedom to do that.
I I was just throwing that out. I I don't mean to limit. It it's your process. Uh, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't want to run it. You could do it over two days. You could do it over one meeting. Whatever you feel comfortable doing, you can set the time limits, you can have predetermined questions. Uh, it's totally your process. It's it's the person that you're going to select, not staff. And so uh we're we're here to take direction from you as to how you want to do that. I do think uh probably a meeting in and of itself, but that's separate from a regular council meeting would be appropriate. And I think we could I I think we would try to schedule them uh at your convenience as soon as possible. I have a feeling all of these folks will make themselves available whenever we ask them to, frankly.
Okay, so council then, uh I'll go through council if if you're uh amenable to that, that we go ahead and and interview for these four. Uh, and you know, we doesn't, uh our timeline, thirty to sixty minute range, I would imagine, would be wise. Maybe you get someone in there who you don't even want to spend thirty minutes with. Um, or you get someone in there that uh you say, oh, I've got forty-five minutes with them. I have a lot more to ask because this person looks pretty interesting. So I would hope that we would have that kind of flexibility, Mr. Vaughn?
Yeah, I think we can come up with uh some structure for you to follow. But again, it's your process. And if you want to go longer or shorter or however you want to do it, I think uh staff is here to just kind of facilitate uh, you know, the best outcome for you. And so we've come up with some ideas pre-interview for you to kind of get the ground rules between you squared away so that you're not all over each other. And I I think I think uh that's how I would suggest you proceed.
Okay, um, Mr. Jones, does it sound good to you?
Uh, it's fine by me. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Mr. Lambert?
Uh, same here.
Okay, Ms. Lewis?
Yes, I'm okay.
Very good. And Mr. Yamas?
Yes, sir.
And I am too. So uh, Mr. Vaughn, you can uh you.
I think it'll be the HR department reaching out to them. Uh, we'll we'll again draw straws to see who gets that job.
Oh, thank you very much. A very important job.
And we'll try to search.
Most important is the date that you guys want to do this.
Yeah, I think they want, I what I understand is the sooner the better and we'll try to like honor that. And then w- we might want to like see, we might want to give uh council some suggestions on dates soon that work for staff as well. You'll need some staff there to 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 help and uh and the availability of the recruiters as well.
Absolutely. Okay.
I think we understand that you want to get going on this. You under- we understand that uh you don't want to, you know, to delay. And uh we'll we'll be mindful of that and try to try to work the schedule out that way. Lucy, is that okay?
Yeah, I'll probably be reaching out to you to find out what days don't work for you so that I can find a date that works for everybody.
Okay.
All righty. Thank you very much.
So just just to recap, it's WP CP, it's Bob Murray, it's CPS HR and it's Alliance. And that those names all showed up on more than once. So it's not just one one outlier that uh got somebody's attention.
That's right. Very good. Uh, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Presentation.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, um, so we'll move on to item fifteen, our COVID nineteen status update, Acting City Manager Breezy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so I decided to create this slide to help show you some of the information that I'll be presenting to you tonight. There was a pretty significant change that the governor announced yesterday, which I will go into in a moment. Let's talk about some COVID nineteen statistics. And if you look at the top left column there, we're going to talk about California statistics just to put some some depth to uh what we've gone through for the last year, which has been a pretty significant life-changing event for all of us up and down this nation of ours. As of yesterday, we had over three million five hundred thousand cases in California and unfortunately over fifty-eight thousand deaths. And Merced County specifically, uh you all know, as we're all aware, one of the few counties left in the purple tier. Though my understanding is that the county is in some form of communication with the state um in an attempt to decipher why we're still on purple tier and uh work its way out of it. So for statistics for Merced County, the active, overall active cases in Merced County at this moment are six hundred and forty-one. Positivity rate is about four point three percent. Eighteen individuals are actively hospitalized currently in Merced County. We have a regional ICU capacity. That means the ICU capacity in Merced County has available beds for about twenty-one percent of its care. I I want to say our number was in the low to mid twenties for total ICU beds in in Merced County. Again, another grim statistic is the number of deaths since this pandemic started in Merced County was at four hundred and forty-two individuals. Daily case rate is at eleven point eight at this moment. To talk about Los Banas specifically, um as of again yesterday, over five thousand positive cases since March of last year. Cases per one thousand residents is one hundred and twenty-six point two. Our number of deaths within this geographic city limits of Los Banas is at fifty-seven. Initially, when we created this slide, we talked about what it would take to get us. We thought about the idea of what it was going to take to get us from the purple to the red tier, which is the red tier is less restricted than the purple tier is. And so I thought it would be a good thing to go over, which I will, because we're still two months away from the change proposed by the governor. So to go from purple to red, our average um number of cases per day for thousand resident, hundred thousand residents is between four and ten. Currently, we're at eleven point eight daily cases. And that is a recent development, a recent increase over the last week, I believe it is, last few days, actually. And that's where the s- county is attempting to communicate with the state and how we got to that number because there's there might be an explanation for that. Uh, I don't have any final answers. And of course, when I get them, I will certainly provide them to you. Our positive test rates for the entire county have to be at between five and eight percent to move down into the red tier. Currently, we're at four point three. Now, that's a good thing. We were at, uh, going back to the first bullet point, the number of daily cases. I believe we were at somewhere in the range of seven per hundred thousand residents before our recent jump to eleven point eight. Moving down to the third bullet, we're at, um, oh, I apologize. The statistics for those above numbers that we just talked about have to be met and maintained for a period of two consecutive weeks before the state would move you down from purple to red or red to yellow or or down further orange, somewhere along that ways. But again, I'll point out that the governor just yesterday came out with an announcement where as of June fifteenth, he intends on doing away with the state tearing system as we currently have at the colored system. And as long as two things occur, um California will open and remain open. Those two things are, as long as vaccines are, the supply levels were available to everyone above sixteen and older who wish to be vaccinated and that our ICU capacity levels in hospitals remain stable. And we think we're at those two um elements currently. And we hope that by June fifteenth, we are going to literally, based on what I'm hearing, put the switch from perhaps purple, hopefully we're in red by then, uh down to a level that's closer to green where everything will be open, with the exception of the sounds at this point that the governor is going to continue the mask mandate and some of the other rules that he initiated. But for the purposes of businesses and life getting back to normal, it will be the largest jump in the last year that we anywhere in Merced County have seen. So we're looking forward to that day and pray that we get there safely with uh no longer any deaths. Talk about vaccinations really quickly. California has administered over twenty million six hundred thousand vaccine doses since we started the vaccination effort. Now, that's a combination of single dose Johnson and Johnson and the two dose Moderna and Pfizer uh vaccinations. So that number doesn't necessarily mean two, excuse me, twenty million fully vaccinated individuals. We've just given out twenty million shots, but that's still a good thing. Uh, the population of California is thirty-nine million, so we're getting close to a really high vaccination number just based on those numbers as of yesterday. Merced County's population is about two hundred and eighty-five thousand individuals. And as of this day, we've administered over a hundred and two thousand doses of vaccine. Again, that doesn't mean fully vaccinated individuals walking our streets. That's a lot better than we were back just a few months back. That'll conclude my comments. If anyone has any questions about um anything that I've just talked about, I will say that we are at the staff level working to provide you with some more information come the April twenty-first meeting in regards to our emergency declaration as well as we hope to have more information as what as to what the June fifteenth uh date deadline accomplishment means from the governor. I don't know if he's rescinding the emergency declaration at the state level. Just don't have that information yet. We will be providing that to you by the April twenty-first meeting. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, I'll go through council for questions. Mr. Jones?
No questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Lambert?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
No questions, Mayor.
Thank you. And Mr. Yamas?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the excellent presentation. The slides always make it a lot easier to to understand things. We sure appreciate that, the visuals. And so does the the viewing public, however few, however many there are. Uh, excuse me. Now we will go on to advisement of public notices, uh Community and Economic Development Director Ellen.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So we have one item to report. Um, this is a site plan review for a city project. Uh, this is for a shade sale canopy at um Vineyard Basin V Park, uh which is located at six twenty Vineyard Drive. Uh, the public hearing, uh this is for a site plan review. The public hearing will be held on Wednesday, April fourteenth at five thirty PM on Zoom. And the link for that meeting will be available on the planning commission's agenda. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And now we'll move back to our city, Acting City Manager Breezy for this uh city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Two big um announcements that I, well, two announcements that I'd like to talk about are the April nineteenth soft soft opening of the dog park. I won't say too much about that in case the council might ever like to. And then um the other one is just a lot of thanks again to you all for um the approval for the I-Bank application as well as your support and involvement for the new police department. It's greatly appreciated. I know our staff is really looking forward to it. It means a lot to a lot of us. I just want to say thank you for that. And that is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, um, on on my agenda, I have a report regarding executive compensation.
Yes, you do, Mr. Mayor. I apologize. We do have two executive compensations to report out to you tonight. And the first one is as of March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, based upon an annual performance evaluation review, the fire chief's salary was increased to twelve thousand five hundred and twenty dollars monthly or a hundred and fifty thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars annually. And that is retroactive back to August sixteenth, twenty twenty. Second, on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, based upon an annual performance evaluation review, the community and economic directors, community and economic development directors' salary was increased to nine thousand eight hundred and thirteen thousand, thirteen dollars monthly or one hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars annually. And that was retroactive back to February first, twenty twenty-one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Now I have my report uh on MCAG. Uh, I've got a couple of things there. MCAG, and I've mentioned this uh before, has received a variance waiver for treated wood waste for the Billy Wright landfill. And that means that we can immediately resume receiving treated wood waste material at Billy Wright. Social media posts should be going out. Uh, that is the, that's treated lumber in construction. It has to go to a special location uh in landfills and and dumps. And it it's an expensive dump. Uh, it's an expensive product to to deal with. And so Billy Wright has gotten the, uh, MCAG has gotten the uh the variance so that we can continue to take that to Billy Wright. So you don't have to make two drop-offs of your regular wood waste when you're building something, both for professional construction and uh do-it-yourselfers. To get that lumber, that waste lumber, you can all dump it all off in the same place. That's very good news. Also, uh, the bus is offering free bus rides to and from COVID nineteen vaccination appointments. On fixed route services, riders must simply show proof of a confirmed vaccination appointment. On dial ride or paratransit, riders must simply indicate that the trip is for a vaccination appointment at the time of the booking. Masks are required when riding the bus and waiting at all stops. Peninsula Clean Energy is still looking for a um someone to serve on their citizens advisory committee. They really want someone from Los Banas. Their entire uh citizens advisory committee is presently uh based in the Bay Area and they really want some representation over here. And so uh if you're interested in getting involved in in this, uh, you can go to uh Peninsula Clean Energy's website, join our team, or you can inquire here at City Hall, and we can direct you to where you need to go for that. Measure V, I don't have anything new uh from the Measure V committee. And with that then, we'll move to the council member reports. And we'll start tonight with Councilmember Yamas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any real report. I just wanted to say a thank you to uh Acting City Manager Breezy. Really appreciate the the updates, the information, uh, the uh attractiveness. It really gets me, helps me get a sense of the uh the town, and it's happening. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. Mr. Jones?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
Uh, nothing to report. Just uh want to let all the uh presenters, you know, let them know that they did a tremendous job on presenting uh all the council members' uh their their reports. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. Um, again, I want to thank council for the support on item number thirteen, thirteen this evening for the resolution. I have uh written down here, excuse me, uh, for our city manager to uh let us know when we might be hearing from Buckstead again. I don't think we heard at all from them last year with their annual report because of COVID. So I I think we're probably due for a report from them. And also, um, I'd like to make a request, a council member request to have the lobbyists that we pay annually uh to come before the city council and uh give us a report of what it is that they do. And um for me, it it's become a cost value thing. Uh, I'm, I'd like to know if the money that we have to pay them annually is actually bringing a return to the city. If not, then, you know, that money can be well spent for other things that we need in order to enhance our community. So I I would like to make a a request to have the lobbyists come and give a report to the council. We've, we've never had that in, I don't know how, I can't remember Tom, how long it's been that we hired that person, probably about four years.
About four years?
Yeah, about four years. And we've never, never heard from them. And lastly, um, we had a, excuse me, um, during public forum, we had a a a letter read into us from a Mr. Dwayne Brenham in regards to uh the landscape trimming uh around his premises. And that appears to be um in the Anderson project. I'm not quite sure that I've ever had a real honest answer to my question. And that has always been, why does our landscape company, Ronnie's, trim hedge, allow hedges to grow into the sky? And now they're just kind of like trimmed as far as staff can get them, and the rest of them are just kind of waving around in the air. When I've driven over in the district where the Anderson homes are, even in areas where no homes have been built yet, the landscape is disproportionate. Hedges have grown into the trees and are almost as tall as the trees. And I've noticed that some of the trees are being choked out and dying. So if, if they can trim the hedges as high as they can get them, I don't know why they can't just trim them back to be hedges where they should be, as they were intended to grow. I'm sure that a lot of those hedges were planted in order to not only beautify the community but help to combat graffiti. But I, I could never really get a good answer. So I don't know if this is Joe's area of concern or if it's Fred. But if they're out there doing the trimming anyway, I don't know why they can't trim them back to where they're supposed to be. And the only answers that we ever seem to get or that I ever seem to have gotten as an individual was about, you know, healthiness of the landscape and lighting district. None of that adds up to me. If they're out there trimming it already and just kind of like lobbing them into the sky, I don't know why they can't trim them down to where they're supposed to be. So I, I would just like an answer as to why our lands, our Ronnie's landscape can't do the job and bring those hedges back to its original intended height and not have them grow into the trees. It's really kind of unsightly, and I think we can do better than that. So though, that's what I have for this evening, and it was a good meeting, good presentations, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Maybe we can get, maybe get a little report in the council meeting about landscape and lighting and how we're handling these concerns.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Lewis, I'll be happy to look into this and see what the story behind it is, what the practice is all about and where it comes from. I would be happy to do that.
Thank you very much. I don't have much tonight, except the opening of the dog park on April nineteenth. Congratulations, Mr. Mr. Heim and Public Works. And Ms. Lewis, I know has been a big advocate of this for a long time, and we're very pleased to see it happen, just one more step in making our city a better place for our residents. Now we're going to go into closed session, and we have two items. Making sure it's just two, yes. Let me check, let me check my paperwork, make sure it's two, yeah, just two. Conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to paragraph four of subdivision D of Government Code, section five four nine five six point nine, one potential case. On item B, conference with legal counsel pending litigation pursuant to paragraph one of subdivision D of Government Code, section five four nine five six point nine, one case, City of Merced at All versus Merced County Association of Governments. And we come out of closed session, we will report.
Mayor, could you announce the adjournment time and place as well before we go into closed session?
We can do that. The, do you want me to make, you want the action and motion item now?
You can do that now, just to be adjourned after the conclusion of the closed sessions.
Okay, then we'll do that now.
Do you also want to explain how the council stays on this meeting and everybody else goes off?
Oh, yeah. Mr. Vaughn, you want to explain that?
We, we, we don't need to log back in, everyone just stay put. And staff members that aren't part of the closed session will be dropping off, then we'll start.
Thank you very much. So our adjournment this evening is going to be to adjourn to four PM Monday, April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one, to hold a city council priority workshop, which will be held virtually, and the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, so moved.
Thank you. Second?
Mayor, I was second.
Thank you, I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lewis and a second by Councilmember Lambert to adjourn this meeting to four PM Monday, April twelfth. Roll call, Ms. Melanie?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. So when we adjourn the meeting after the closed session, then we'll follow that protocol. Thank you, everyone, and have a good evening.
There you go.
Okay, we've come out of closed session, and on both items, we've given direction to staff.
Thank you, we're done. Okay, I'm going to end the meeting.